All the women have come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the board.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Present.
Alderman Bosley.
Present.
Alderwoman Evans.
Present.
Alderman Page.
Present.
Alderwoman Gracia.
Present.
Alderman Colder.
Here.
Alderwoman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Baum.
Present.
Alderwoman Martin.
Present.
Alderman Stevens.
Here.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Present.
Alderwoman Howard.
Present.
Alderwoman Green.
Present.
Alderman Audemar.
Present.
Alderwoman Peel.
Here.
Alderman Tyus.
Present.
Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer.
Here.
Alderman Mohammed.
Here.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Pecoro.
Present.
Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Kong. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd.
Present.
President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Davis.
Present.
Alderman Kong. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Twenty-sixth present.
For him being present, again today, this prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Amen. We will suspend with our regular order of business, take up our courtesy resolutions calendar, all of them from the first. All the one from the first, is she with us?
No.
Okay, all the one from the nineteenth, you recognize on motion for our courtesy resolutions count.
President Reed and members of the board, I move to adopt our courtesy resolution calendar for this session today.
Move about all one from the first.
Second.
Second about all one from the fourth. Alderman from the twenty-first, you recognize. Alderman from twenty-first. You could, okay, alright.
It is not my resolution.
Okay.
My colleague from the twenty-seven.
Okay, so, so the twenty-seven, all the one from the twenty-seven.
Mr. President, on behalf of the caucus, I'm asking that Alderman from the twenty-first present the resolution to his mother. Because the Black Caucus did do the resolution, but it is his mom and he needs to speak on it. Thank you, sir.
There you go. So we're right back to you, Alderman. You can't.
Wow. Well, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, members of the board. Thank you, Chairwoman Boyd and members of the the Aldermanic Black Caucus. It is my honor and privilege today as we honor Dr. Latanya Collins Smith, who is the twenty-first president of Harris St. University and the first African-American woman to hold this position. This is exciting for me because I get to call her Latanya today. So, Mr. President, I would please like to ask the clerk to read the resolution in its entirety.
And Madam Clerk, can you please read resolution?
Resolution one ninety-four honoring Dr. Latanya Collins Smith. Whereas Dr. Latanya Collins Smith is the twenty-first president of Harris St. University. She is the first African-American woman to serve the university in this role. Collins Smith has more than twenty years of progressive leadership experience with an extensive background in administration and program development. Whereas she began her career in higher education at Harris St. University in two thousand and ten as a project coordinator in the Office of Counseling Services. She also served as the institution as provost and vice president of Academic Affairs, associate provost, assistant provost, and as executive director of the Center for the Career Engagement. Whereas Dr. Collins was the was the co-principal investigator of the five million National Science Foundation grants to substantially strengthen STEM in the state of Missouri, the largest grant in the history of Harris St. She currently serves as peer reviewer for the Higher Learning Commission, the nation's largest regional accreditation body. And whereas she also served as campus leader for the following initiative. Melinda Beal and Melinda Gates Foundation Reimagine First Year Project, the Strata Foundation Measuring College Value Project, the college, I'm sorry, the Complete College American MSI Initiative, the Ascendum Project Successful Initiative, and the Yala Alumni Survey Project. And whereas Dr. Collins served as the chair of Dr. Martin Luther King Statewide Celebration Commissioner of Missouri, the Board of Higher Education at Corseum Greater St. Louis, she served on both the Alumni Boards of Director and Alumni Foundation Board of the University of Central Missouri. She is a member of the American Association of State Colleges and Universities, the National Association of Colleges and Employers, and Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, the Gamma Omega Chapter. And whereas Dr. Collins has received several leadership and service awards, including the Equal Education Opportunity Group Pioneer Award, Resilience in Action Merchant of Hope Award, Deluxe Magazine One Hundred in Education Award, the two thousand twenty-two NAACP Frankie Muse Freeman Norman A. Say Commitment to St. Louis Award, NAACP Excellence in Education Award, the NAACP Ben Hooks Community Leader Award, and the AKA Central Regional Outstanding Education Advancement Foundation Captain Award. She is the twenty nineteen Millennium Leadership Initiative Protege of St. Louis Business Diversity Initiative Fellow and Higher Education Leadership Foundation Fellow. And whereas a native of the historic Beal neighborhood in St. Louis, Missouri, Collins Smith is a proud graduate of St. Louis Public Schools. She earned an educational doctoral and higher education leadership from Maryville University in St. Louis, holds a master of social degree, a social work degree, and a master of public health degree from St. Louis University. She is a graduate of University of Central Missouri where she majored in social work. Now therefore, let it be resolved by this honorable Board of Alderman of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberation during Women's History Month to recognize the many achievements and accomplishments of Dr. Latanya Collins Smith, the first African-American woman president of Harris St. University. We further direct the clerk of this board to spread copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented to her at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduce this fourth day of March, two thousand and twenty-two by the honorable Pamela Board, twenty-seventh ward, and the following honorable Alderpersons: John Collins Mohammed, twenty-first ward, Sharon Tyus, first ward, Bill Stevens, twelfth ward, Marlene Davis, nineteenth ward, Shamine Clark Hubbard, twenty-sixth ward, Lisa Middlebrook, second ward, Tina Peel, seventeenth ward, and James Page, fifth ward.
Alderman from the twenty-first.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, we are honoring Dr. Latanya Collins Smith, who again is the president of Harris St. University, an institution that has served the city of St. Louis since eighteen fifty-seven, the only institution in our city that gives second chances and third chances to high school students looking to get their college degree and looking for economic and quality education. With that, Mr. President, I will leave it to my fellow colleagues.
Right, excellent. Alderman from the twenty-seventh, we'll go back to you since you were the primary sponsor on that and then we'll take, open it up.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you, Alderman Mohammed. It was funny to have you speak and you did your mom proud today because she was listening. I know Tanya how she is. So, thank you very much for speaking so eloquently in regards to her as a leader in our community and especially as a black woman in our city. And so, I turn it back over to you, Mr. President.
Alright, I'll ask everyone, if you're not speaking, please keep your microphones on mute if you haven't been recognized. Alderman from the twenty-third. Two quick things. One, I consider John my brother, so I assume you must be my adopted mother. You raised him well. But, but my other thing, and I thought my name was on this, but I still think I'd like to make a motion, we do it in bank.
Second.
Move about all of them from twenty-third, second about all of them from fourteenth, that we make resolution number one ninety-four in bank. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. I was done, that was all, just, anyway, did a good job with John and you must be a man adopted mother because John is my brother. Alright, Alderman from the fourteenth.
Yes, I was gonna ask my name be added, but I would also like to recognize Ms. Dr. Collins. Dr. Collins, as her son John knows, was an alumni of Cleveland Junior Naval Academy when I was serving there as a teacher. And she's come a long way. I don't remember how many years ago that's been. I won't, and I won't reveal that because, you know, after I taught there for twenty-five years, she was probably one of the early students and I'm sure that other people remember her from Cleveland ROTC. And it just shows that the St. Louis Public Schools do, does turn out good students and they are very successful. And I want to congratulate her and commend her on her success. And, and I would like to also recognize that John has, has done her proud, but that other, that other guy from the twenty-third, I don't know what happened to him. But anyway, congratulations, Dr. Collins Smith, and more success as president of my college. I appreciate your work and, and the job you've done so far and you will continue. Thank you so much for your service and for the achievements you've, you've attained. Thank you again and more success to come.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the twenty-second.
Yes, good morning, Mr. President and members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity. Dr. Collins Smith, congratulations. Thank you for being a trendsetter. You are inspiring, I'm sure, a lot of young women. Wow, you look so young. I'm just amazed and you're just sparkling this morning. You look fabulous this morning. Maybe at some point you can get with some of the members of the Board of Alderman and teach us how to manage John a little bit better, Alderman Collins Mohammed, you know. We really trying to really work with him as hard as we can. So if you give us any inspiration and guidance on how to effectively communicate with him, we would greatly appreciate it. Thank you and congratulations again.
Point of order. Please take your point of order. Point of order not well taken. All the one, all the one from the fourth.
I had removed my hand, but since you called on me, I'm going, I would also like to congratulate her. As I can say, I am an alumni from Harris when it was called Harris Teachers College, but I won't go back that far to say what that was, when that was. So, I would just like to congratulate her for her services and this acknowledgement is well deserved.
Alright. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from twenty-third, still, Alderman from twenty-second? All along from the, hold on for a second. Let's go to all of them from the nineteenth and all of them from the twenty-third, Alderman from twenty-second, if you want to speak again, put your hand back up, all the one from nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. First, let me say congratulations to you, Dr. Collins Smith. You know that I am a great, great supporter and one of your greatest cheerleaders for the university. And even before it became a part of the nineteenth ward, I'm always on campus, always willing to support. And I tell you, I've learned a lot from you. I don't know if you even remember, you had me participate in one of those higher learning, I guess it's a state audit type thing where you'd show all your academic structure for them to evaluate from people all over the state. And you had that so well organized. And I was so proud to hear what I heard about what is going on in its totality with the university. And you are truly, truly well deserving of this position. And I know that you will do us well. And I'm very, very, very happy for you. And I'm wishing you much, much success. I'm asking in this region to get behind you in your leadership and support the university and make sure that you have all the resources that you need in order to provide the best education experience possible for the students there. And most especially the opportunity for those who teach to have the resources they need to do even a better job than they're already doing. Again, congratulations to you. Thank you.
Alderman from the third. His hand just went down.
No, it's okay. I just wanted to say thank you for your service. Really appreciate, you know, all the great things that you're doing. I think it's very important, especially with this being Women's Month, to recognize the great things that our women are doing. There would be no us if it was not for you all. You all have been the backbone for our community for a lot of years. And when it comes down to us, you know, being, unfortunately, just being truthful, being kind of educational pioneers of our culture right now, you are leading. You are the ones that are teaching our communities when a lot of us get locked up. So I appreciate you and I appreciate your service and everything you are bringing to the table and inspiring our young people to become and, you know, follow a path that you've already helped pave the way. So, so I appreciate you. Thank you very much for your service. Anything in any way I can be of assistance, you know, right here in the third or, you know, as it turns into a different district, anything, please don't hesitate to ask. This is a time where we got funding for stuff, so I always want to throw that out there because we have never been able to just say that loosely. We talk about education and education is everything when it comes down to us building our city up. And you are in a very powerful position. So any way we can, you know, once again, help move that agenda along and help you be more powerful in your position. You know, just reach out. Thank you very much.
Alderman from the twenty-sixth for the first time.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Good morning, Queen. I will echo everything that everyone has said and I would have been amazed if I didn't just chime in and offer again my congratulations. I support one hundred percent. You already know, I have been on one thousand stents Monday since the announcement came out. And the reality is because like Alderman Boyd said, women like me out here in the community are watching and have been watching women like you and it's inspiring. And it's beautiful to see, especially because, you know, myself and my husband, how we've been watching the work for years and watching you steady, steady, steady put in the commitment, put in the service so that, to not just Harris St., but all over our communities. The way you touch and your reach is amazing. So, your glow is amazing this morning and you deserve every bit of it. Keep smiling and keep serving knowing that once again, you have clearly all of our hundred percent support.
Now, thank the Alderman from the twenty-second, you had your hand back up.
Yes, Mr. President, members of board. I just didn't want to forget to do something. We have a lot of great resolutions. Kind of you had me to one ninety-one, ninety-one, one ninety-three, one ninety-five, and one ninety-eight.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
Thank you.
Alright. All the one from the nineteenth, you had your hand up, you took it, are you good? And then all the one from the twenty-sixth, your hand is still up. Are you good? Back to the, all the one from the twenty-seven, but before we go back to her, I just want to say, Dr. Collins Smith, in a little bit of lost words because of how much I just respect and admire you. You have done some great things in the world of education. The works that you've done in raising your kids, you can tell a tree by the fruit that it bears. And you've just done such a tremendous job. You know, I've known John since years and years ago and see him grow and then serve at the Board of Alderman. It's just been a pleasure for me and others. And to see your daughter serve in the state capital, congratulations on job well done. And then for you, breaking new trends at Harris St., wow, wow. You have truly already left a mark on the city of St. Louis that's unparalleled. So I just want to congratulate and thank you so much. As you know, this resolution is Tyus honor, the board has given the organization individual. Right? And a lot of times as African-Americans, we've seen our history be rewritten or totally written out of history. So, this act is one that's really important in terms of assuring that a person's contributions and history is firmly documented and submitted in the records of the city of St. Louis. And that's what we're doing here today for you. So, one hundred, two hundred years from now, you will be able to go back and research and see that history and read about Dr. Collins Smith and the work that she's done and the legacy that she brought to the city of St. Louis. So, congratulations on job well done. Alderman from the twenty-seventh, would you like to introduce Dr. Collins? Or Alderman from the nineteenth, turn around, run a year off. Somebody from the caucus introduce the doctor.
I am honored and I am privileged to introduce to some that don't know her and let other people be aware of Dr. Latanya Collins Smith, the first African-American woman to be the president of Harris St. College, University. I stand corrected, university, my college, university. And so, I think people don't, in St. Louis is so small and I say this all the time, it's a dot connector. And all you got to do is look around and connect the dots. And so, Dr. Latanya has went to school with a lot of people within our community and they've grown up together. And it's so interesting because from elementary to college, she has touched people lives. So, at this time, to the Board of Alderman, I would like to introduce to you all Dr. Latanya Collins Smith.
Good morning, good morning, everyone. Thank you all so much. I am, I am truly humbled and honored to be with you this morning and to receive this resolution. You know, oftentimes, I have seen these resolutions given throughout the city and, and to other individuals. And so, today I get my own resolution. Never thought I would, but it is, it is truly an honor to be a recipient of this resolution. As the clerk was reading, I was like, wow, I did all that? And so, that is just a testament of who I am as a person. And as I share with my team here and as I stated on Monday, this is so not about me. This is about how I could be used in service in order to help young people and anyone who is interested in going on and receiving a college education. Harris St. is a beacon of light and it is a gem, truly a gem here in our, in our city. And it is really one that we can really brag about because we have the lowest tuition in the state of Missouri. And not only that, we are an institution of second chances. Oftentimes, you know, people say, well, Harris St. has, look at the graduation rates. Well, the part that people don't understand about Harris St. is this. We're an institution of second chances and oftentimes individuals transfer to us in their second year. The way that the, the federal guidelines are designed, we don't get to count them in our graduation rate. And it doesn't mean that they don't go on to be successful individuals. You know, this is full circle for me for a number of reasons. As a proud resident, lifelong resident of the city of St. Louis, and also as a proud product of St. Louis Public Schools, many of my educators were, as, as you heard from Alderwoman Howard, who I affectionately know as Ms. Howard, who was my art teacher in high school. Many of my educators were Harris or St. teachers alums, teacher college alums. And so, this is an opportunity for me to also give back to them, everything that they have sewn into me. And so, this is truly, truly, truly an honor. I thank every member of the Black Caucus for this recognition. I also want to let you know, Ms. Marlene, I will, Alderwoman Davis, I will be reaching out to you because that time has come again. And so, I'll be reaching out to you as a representative from the community to share with our accrediting body the great work that, that we're doing here. And Alderwoman Boyd, thank you so much. I affectionately call her Mama Boyd because her daughter and I, her daughter was my mentor in undergraduate school and we're still very good friends to this day. And Shamine, just everybody. And last, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge my son, John Collins Mohammed, and Alderman Boyd. I will share with you offline because as I know that this is being recorded, I will share with you offline how you can get John together. So, thank you all so much. I truly appreciate this. And I really, really look forward to working with all of you. It's gonna take all of us as we look at the crime and everything that is happening in our community. I am near and dear, this community is near and dear to my heart. I am so St. Louis. And I look forward to being able to share with you all some of the initiatives that will be launched out of Harris St. as a way for us to be able to help reduce some of the crime and also be able to put some of our individuals here in our community to work. So there will be some great things coming out of Harris St. in the next couple of months. And I'm gonna need all of your support on this call and down at the Board of Alderman in order to make sure that we make St. Louis a greater place. So thank you all so much and I won't be labor because I can talk all day and all, all day long about the great things that Harris St. But I look forward to working with each of you. So thank you all so much.
Thank you, Dr. Collins Smith. We appreciate you and I'll be honored if your son delivers your resolution to you personally.
Alderman from the twenty-first.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank Chairwoman Boyd and the members of the Black Caucus again. They definitely did a good job in keeping this from me because I had no clue until yesterday, right around four o'clock PM. So thank you again for recognizing Mama. It would be remiss, Mr. President, as we talk about the greatness of Harris St., it would be remiss if we did not recognize the legendary Dr. Henry R. Givens and Dr. Duane J. Warmack for their innovative leadership of Harris St. University. And, and thank you to the Board of Regents chaired by the son of the Alderman from the nineteenth ward, Mr. Michael McMillan, who chairs the Board of Regents for Harris St. University and also a former member of our August body. I would like to thank them for, for their nomination and their selection of a very fitting leader. Mama, who I know is going to do a fantastic job and I cannot wait to see a lot of things that Harris St. does. Thank you so much to the Black Caucus. I love you. Thank you.
Hello. Alderman from the fifth.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I cannot.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, I cannot let this moment escape without offering congratulations to Dr. Collins Smith, a proud resident of the fabulous fifth ward, congratulations.
Uh, thanks again, Dr. Collins Smith, for so much, uh, for taking so much time here this morning and all that you've already done. You have a, think about it, you've already created a legacy and you're ju, and you're only midstream in the race. I mean, think about that, 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 that's amazing, so continue to do what you're doing. Uh, and like everyone here said, man, you're so young to accomplish so much already. Thank you and have a great day. Now, um, I think we had a resolution by Carol, uh, Alderman from the fourteenth.
Yes, um, at this time, I'd like to put before the Board of Alderman Resolution Number One ninety, recognition of March as Bleeding Disorders Awareness Month. And I have as my guest this morning, Bridget Tyree, I believe she's on the call.
Would you like the clerk to read the resolution?
Yes, I would, I would like the clerk to read the resolution.
All right, uh, Madam Clerk, please read, please read Resolution One ninety.
Resolution One ninety, recognizing, recognize, recognition of March as Bleeding Disorder Awareness Month. Whereas this honor Board of Alderman of the City of St. Louis has been apprised that March twenty-twenty-two will be recognized as Bleeding Disorder Awareness Month. And whereas this designation will formalize and expand upon the designation thirty-six years ago of March nineteen eighty-six as Hemophilia Awareness Month by President Ronald Reagan. And whereas the Federal Department of Health and Human Services designated March twenty-sixteen as National Bleeding Disorder Month. And whereas multiple states and local governments since nine, I'm sorry, since twenty-sixteen have passed a proclamation and or resolutions declaring March as Bleeding Disorder Awareness Month. And whereas bleeding disorder advocates during this month, wear a red material around your neck. And whereas these bleeding disorders which share the inability to form a proper blood clot are characterized by extended bleeding after injury, surgery, tra, trauma, or menstruation and can lead to significant morbidity and also, and it can be fatal if not treated effectively. Whereas many individuals with hemophilia became affected with HIV and hepatitis C in nineteen eighties due to the contamination of blood supply and blood products. And whereas this awareness month in the city of St. Louis, Missouri will generate great awareness and understanding of not only hemophilia but all inheritable bleeding disorders, including von Willebrand disease, which alone impacts the estimated one percent of the US population or more than three point two million individuals. And whereas this awareness month will foster a greater sense of community and shared purpose among individuals with all inheritable bleeding disorders. And whereas this awareness month will elevate awareness of, of and engagement in the in, inheritable bleeding disorders journey beyond our community to the general public, enabling the prevention of illness, unnecessary procedures, and disability. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Board of Alderman of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to recognize March twenty-twenty-two as Bleeding Disorder Awareness Month in the city of St. Louis, Missouri, and thank all who have worked to cure, prevent, and make the public awareness of this illness. We further direct the clerk of the Board of Alderman to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented to our honoree at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduce this fourth day of March twenty-twenty-two by the Honorable Carol Howard, Fourteenth Ward, um, Alderwoman, Sharon Tyers, First Ward, Bill Stevens, Twelfth Ward, Jeffrey Boyd, Twenty-seven, I'm sorry, Twenty-second Ward, and Shamine Clark, Cover, Twenty-sixth Ward.
All the one from the fourteenth.
I would like to, um, recognize, uh, Ms. Bridget Tyree, who, from the, uh, Hemophilia Foundation located in my ward, uh, at this time, Bridget, if you'd like to speak to the body.
Thank you, good morning, everyone, uh, thank you for having me. A special thank you to Alderwoman Carol Howard for having me as her guest. Um, so I'm Bridget Tyree, I'm the Executive Director of Gateway Hemophilia Association. We've been serving people with bleeding disorders since nineteen sixty-nine. We cover eastern Missouri and southern Illinois. We're the only nonprofit serving people with bleeding disorders in the St. Louis area. So March, as, um, you heard, is Bleeding Disorders Awareness Month. It's a time to spread awareness about bleeding disorders such as hemophilia. Uh, my father had hemophilia, I'm a carrier, my son has hemophilia, I've never known life without hemophilia. Um, it's an inheritable bleeding disorder where the blood does not clot properly. Um, it can lead to spontaneous bleeding as, um, like following injuries, surgeries, and there's no cure for hemophilia and treatment can be very costly. So all week, members of our community, we've been meeting with our federal elected officials, uh, via Zoom that are located in Washington DC. And then next week, we plan to, we have appointments with our state representatives. So we're currently working on an accumulator adjuster bill, which allows co-pay assistance to count towards a patient's deductible. There's more information on that on our website. And I just want to say the work that our elected officials do are extremely important. So I want to thank all of you for all the hard work that you do in the city of St. Louis, and behind me, we hang our proclamation very proudly for St. Louis, so thank you for.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twelfth. Hold on for a second, uh, Bridget, uh, hold on for a second, don't log off.
Don't go away.
Alderman from the twelfth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, I would like to, uh, move that we make this, uh, courtesque resolution and bank.
Alderman from the twelfth, uh, who seconded that, I missed that. I. Uh, I'll second about all the one from the twenty-seventh.
The nineteenth.
The nineteenth, uh, all right. Second about all the one from the nineteenth, all in favor, signify by a sign aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that, uh, create another copy of Resolution One ninety and bank. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Well, Bridget, I want to just continue to thank you, um, and you, you come before us every year and, um, you know, continue to do good work, uh, within our community. I don't know if everyone knows your story, I know, we've heard it in the past. And if you wouldn't mind, if you'll, could you please tell people how you got involved and why? And, and just give them a little bit of that background information, I think it'd be good.
Of course, President, um, we, so my father had hemophilia and we lived in a, De Soto, Missouri. So about forty minutes south of St. Louis, and he would come to St. Louis University to get his treatment, um, back in the eighties. A, they did not heat treat medication and the blood supply, so he contracted HIV/AIDS. And so, um, it was the hemophilia community that kept seeing this in the blood supply and kept raising their hands saying, um, there's something in our nation's blood supply, we're losing husbands, we're losing sons, we're losing children. And, um, it was, uh, definitely a pandemic. And so he died in nineteen eighty-six, he lived about eighteen months with AIDS. And so I was ten years old, my father was thirty-three, left a, left a wife with two daughters. And, and she moved us to the big city of St. Louis because, um, they were more acceptable and more understanding and, uh, more opportunities for us. So fast forward, I have a son now, he just turned twenty-seven a couple, um, two days ago. And I do what I do because I don't want what happened to my father in that generation to happen, uh, for our future generation. So the National Hemophilia Foundation, we have somebody that sits on the nation's blood supply, um, the CDC. So they watch, they, they're, they're looking at prevention. So when people say, how does hemophilia affect me? Uh, it definitely through the CDC, we, we advocate for funding and maintaining funding for prevention and disease awareness. So, um, please stop by my office or call me, Gateway Hemophilia, you can Google us. We're in Eichelberger, one block off of King's Highway. We have a huge walk on, um, in July on a Sunday. And we gather our families to come and, and just, um, spread awareness. And so we can continue offering education and, um, we offer medical LRRP bracelets, financial assistance, scholarships. So we are, like I said, the only nonprofit of our kind and we're here and we will continue to be here. We've been here for fifty-two years now.
All right, thank you so much, Bridget, for all of your work and thank you for the story. I think it means so much when you share that every year with us.
Thank you, thank you for all the work that you do.
All right, thank you, and your son's twenty-seven now.
Can you believe it?
Really goes fast, man, I'm getting gray hair, you still, you're looking still as young as you were when I first saw you. Like, congratulations.
You're so sweet, thank you, oh.
All right.
Thank you for, for keeping our blood supply safe for everyone because the work you do is important, not only for people with, with bleeding disorders, it's important for those of us that may at some point need a blood transfusion because it's very important, uh.
Yeah, yeah, thanks again, have a good day. Alder, Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, I wanted to recognize, uh, Dr. Marty K. Casey. And a lot of people are familiar with that name. And so I'm asking the clerk, would she please read that resolution for us?
Madam Clerk, could you please read Resolution, uh, One ninety-three?
Resolution One ninety-three honoring Dr. Marty K. Casey. Whereas Dr. Marty K. Casey, performance artist and activist, has procreated and given meaning to a new word, a, archivist. Whereas leveraging the arts of healing, Dr. Casey founded Ungun Institution, focused on healing trauma through applied arts. And whereas Dr. Casey has found a way to connect and communicate through the arts. In two thousand and twenty, she performed onstage in the Big Apple for the AARP Association to a sold-out crowd just days before the global pandemic forced a lockdown. And whereas while the pan, pandemic slowed us all down, Dr. Casey still found ways to push her agenda for activism and community, community healing. And as such, her efforts gained recognition by the St. Louis Business, Business Journal, featuring her on the cover as one of the twenty-five most influential businesswomen in St. Louis. And whereas Dr. Casey's community and philanthropy efforts over the past ten years have yielded numerous awards and accolades. However, the greatest award of them all is realizing the positive impact, impact that her commitment to engaging, connecting, and communicating with the community. And whereas Dr. Casey actively serves on three boards, Hope Creates, Gateway to Dreams and Purpose Earth, all aligned with her admission to heal communities through the empowerment of recovery through expressive art. In two thousand and twenty-one, Marty K. Casey received the Presidential Lifetime Achievement Award signed by President Joseph R. Biden. And therefore, let it be resolved by the Board of Alderman of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations during Women's History Month to recognize the many accomplishments and achievements of Dr. Mary K. Casey. We further direct the clerk of this board to spread the, a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented at a, at her, at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduce this fourth day of March twenty-twenty-two by the Honorable Pamela Boyd, Twenty-seven Ward, Alderwoman, Sharon Tyers, First Ward, Bill Stevens, Twelfth Ward, Jeffrey Boyd, Twenty-second Ward, and Shamine Clark, Cover, Twenty-sixth.
All the one from the twenty-seventh.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, I was, uh, in February, I was thinking of women who I could have represent us in March. So it started in, from January to February, I have been thinking about it. And so these ladies have, were notified back in February to say, we want to look at recognizing you and the work that you're doing. And so the history of, of, I say of socialism, women are always, it's, um, not, not recognized, but just excluded. You know, we do the work and I call us the worker bees, we, we do the work. And so a lot of times, no offense to the men, but you all stand up with your chest out with your suspenders on, and you say, yeah, this is what we did, but the women are the one that's doing the work. So I'm honored to recognize Dr. Marty K. Casey in her work because she has been that quiet, uh, piece of tornado that's coming through our city. And you all better take heed, because she's coming and she's gonna be a whirlwind. At this time, I want to recognize her for Women's, uh, History Month, thank you.
Dr. Casey, can, I mean, uh, Marty, can, Ms. Casey, can you hold one second? I'm gonna grab a couple of them and we'll come to you in a minute, all the one from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. You know, uh, Alderwoman Boy says she's coming, now she's here. Uh, we go back a bit and I appreciate her, uh, she's a dynamo. And, uh, I wanted to add my name to the resolution, please, thank you.
Uh, would you like to move that it be done and bank, all ones from the nineteenth?
I shall move that it's put in banks, thank you.
Move about all the one from nineteenth, second about all the one from the twenty-sixth, and I think it was all the one from the fourteenth that we make, uh, Resolution One ninety-three and bank. All in favor, signify by a sign aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries, all the one from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, this, I, I don't know how we're gonna make it through the meeting, it's so much, it's so much, congratulations. Alderwoman Davis, I know Erica and I are in the office trying to hold back our tears, listen here. So Dr. Casey, you know, sis, we have shared so many amazing spaces. Um, and I see your work and I feel your work, what I will say is every time you're around, there is absolutely a sweet spirit around, even when you don't speak. So when you speak, and I've heard you talk about the power of the tongue, that is absolutely your superpower, sis, thank you, please keep up the work. The Ungun, if anyone is not familiar with Ungun, do yourself a favor today and look up Ungun, get involved, they get involved with all of her work that she's doing. There are some amazing women, uh, that are out here, like Alderwoman Boy, they have been on the ground, they're doing the work. And they nev, that we could never recognize them enough, but today is a, is a good start, a good time for us too. So thank you for all your work, uh, Dr. Casey. And like we said, like we told, uh, Dr. Collins Smith earlier, it, obviously you have all of our support.
Alderman from the third.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Casey, I just wanted to say, one second. Can you come up to me real quick?
Yeah, we, we still don't see your video.
Hey. Can you come back to me also?
Alderman from the third, we'll come back to you, Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, Ms. Casey, I just want to say, your work is of vital importance. And I hope there is not a single day that you wake up and you question, am I making an impact? Because you are doing one of the most noble things and one of the most intangible things that someone can do. You are encouraging the heart and the spirit. You will always have an advocate for the arts, uh, in, in the twelfth ward. And I just want to point out, your performance, uh, in March twenty-twenty, how many people, how many people looked back on that performance as everything rolled in and the world completely changed and said, well, at least I had that. At least I got to experience Ms. Marty Casey before everything changed. And it's really, I do hope that you wake up every morning and know that you are so vital to St. Louis, so thank you, thank you, thank you. And with that, I yield back.
Alderman from the third, are you back with us? Give him one more second, Alderman from the third, are you back with us? He, all right, he, he lost his video, any further discussion, any further discussion? He, all right. He, he lost his video. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Well, Dr. Casey, I just want to add my just deepest thanks and congratulations on all that you've done. Oftentimes, we don't look at the treasures that are so close to us, right? And you're making a mark on this nation from the city of St. Louis. And you call St. Louis home and you're reaching out and being able to touch people in a different way with your messaging where it's taking root in people and causing people to change what they're doing and to better their lives and the lives of everyone around them. Uh, that's tremendous. And I, you know, I have to say, you know, coming from a spiritual background, um, grandson of a Baptist minister, I have to tell you, uh, that's a gift that God has placed in you, right? That is a gift that he has given you. So thank you for using that gift. And, uh, you know, I was raised to believe that sometimes another person's blessings can't, another person's calling can be your blessing. So your calling has been a blessing to me and others all across the city of St. Louis. So I'm just so honored to join with the rest of the board today in unification to congratulate you on the works that you've done to transform the lives of the people around us. Uh, this resolution, as you heard earlier, is the highest honor the board has to give any organization or individual. And it is an official act of the board to cement and tie some of your many contributions up until this point. So when people come back and see how the role that St. Louis has played in transforming its community and transforming the lives of people across this country, they will read the story of Dr. Marty Casey and know that you passed this way and you contributed so much so that on this day, we pause to recognize you. Let's give her a huge round of applause. And I see Alderman from the third is back with us and then we'll come, then we'll give you an opportunity. Alderman from the third?
I'm sorry, my, my phone is doing some funky stuff today. It's like off and on, it's overheating.
That's all right.
I'm sorry about that. Um, so, uh, Dr. Casey, I really appreciate you. I actually have, have watched, uh, one of your plays before. I don't know if you remember, but, um, the first resolution I, I believe I ever publicly gave out was at one of her plays, uh, where, um, I think you were playing multiple characters, uh, in that play. And, uh, I, I don't remember the premise, but it was a, I'm sorry, it was a really, really good play. That was the first time I'd actually, uh, given out a resolution. And since then, I've learned, uh, a lot about you. And I've seen you at multiple movements that we've had going on throughout the city. So, um, just for the folks that are out there, uh, Dr. Casey is very involved in community and stepping up for the, uh, the rights, um, for all individuals, not just, uh, problems that, uh, are, uh, to main to, to black, uh, issues, African Americans, but she fights for so many different issues. So, and I appreciate all the effort that you put into, uh, trying to better the human race, uh, in general. We saw the effort that you put into also trying to, uh, cultivate the community that, that you know for sure, for sure needs that cultivation, especially from a woman's perspective and that nurturing nature. Uh, so thank you very much for, uh, the, the things that you have done for our communities and, uh, all the great things you will do in the future.
My goodness. Um, first of all, I have to, uh, give honor to God. And I want to say thank you for allowing me to be here. And thank you to the Black Caucus, to all those who have signed on and, um, endorsed. And a special thank you to Alder Woman Pamela Boyd. Um, I, I wish that I had a lot of time to really share as much as I would like to share, but I do want to keep it brief. Um, first of all, let me tell you what Ungun is. Ungun is a transformational process that helps clients to elevate emotionally from stuck and hurt pain that's caused by trauma. I became an activist because acting and music was the one area that helped to save my life. Understanding that the arts helped me to unlock childhood trauma, generational trauma. I knew that if I could bottle it up somehow and offer it to others that I could help them to heal as well. What Ungun is doing is not, has just been done on, um, a national level, but it's being recognized on a global level. But today is one of the most important days of my life because I didn't understand how God would allow me to become known with this process globally and nationally by our president. But I had never come before my people in my own backyard. And I know that we needed the healing the most. So I want you to know that right now, I'm fighting back the tears because I've been waiting on this moment. I am a woman of service. I call myself a entertainer because I understand that what's inside of me comes out and that's what I have to offer to give. Hurt people hurt people, healed people heal people. I had to get to a place of healing so that I would have a greater offer. I am here, St. Louis, born and raised. I could have moved a long time ago to LA and New York and Chicago, Atlanta, and everywhere else, everyone decides to move to go to be great. But I know that the gifts that God gives us wherever we are, those gifts are great. Those gifts can go forth and those gifts can make a difference. And I want to make a difference in my own city. If you don't call on me to be used, how can I show up to be used? This is St. Louis, the show me state. Show me that you need me. Show me that you love me. Show me that what I have means something to you. And I will show you that everything that I have, I freely give to you. I thank you for today. Blessings to all. Continue to do the great work. And just so you know, President Reed, you and I was in a movie together. If you remember the first year, we was in that movie together. And as an activist is what I am, it's a word that I've coined, activist. I am an activist. I'm an actress first, and I'm an activist second. I chose to become an actress because that's where my healing lie. But activism chose me after the unrest of Ferguson. And so with that being said, when you put it all together, we have the medicine, y'all, the natural medicine to heal our city. Every show that you will see me in, I'm in a few movies coming up, The Mink Slide, Alton, Broken Strings, a- and all of those pieces, these are pieces that will help to hold our stories of the past and bridge us a better future. I don't put my name to anything that, that does not give us a, a better outcome. So I thank you for today. I really do. Blessings to each and every last one of you. And Marlene Davis, oh my goodness, Alder Woman. Yes, we go way, way back when I was the, one of the first women to even have a show at the Fox Theater as the writer, director, and producer, name on the marquee, when my great-grandmother in this city, born in nineteen-ten, she was a black woman, did not even, could not even go into those doors. And when I had that show at the Fox, my great-grandmother, who died in two thousand and three, I was able to roll her to the front of the stage. And when the, uh, the, uh, the usher took her to her seat, the, the white usher said to her, oh my goodness, you have the best seats in the house. And my great-grandmother says, well, I should, because that's my great-granddaughter's name out there on that marquee. And so we can change, we can change the, 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 uh, trajectory of, of where we want to go in St. Louis. We are better together, black and white and everything in between. We can do this together, but we have to do it in love. Thank you. Blessings.
Man, Lord Jesus.
That power.
If you all, go ahead.
Church, say amen.
If you are, if you are.
Drop that mic.
Oh, yeah, exactly. If you are not inspired after that, I don't know what will inspire you. Oh, Lord.
I got Holy Ghost doodads going up and down my arm.
Awesome, awesome. Wow. Wow. I, there's nothing I can say but wow. Uh, I have to turn it back over to Alderman from the twenty-seventh, uh, who brought us here so that she can, um, usher you out. Alderman from the twenty-seventh?
Uh, I don't know how to follow that act, so I'm just letting you go. That's not, that's a hard act to follow. But thank you again, Dr. Casey. I am honored that you are, represent the women of St. Louis. And, uh, of course, we know Alder Woman Davis has already been in tune. So we know how she works, correct? So we know that we will see more of you and you will be out there to help our families within our communities. Thank you again.
Everybody record that, show it to everybody. That's St. Louis. That's Dr. Marty Casey so much. Thank you so much. Congratulations. And, uh, I don't know what to say except we'll keep doing it. Just keep doing it, doing, doing your thing all over the country. And thank you for continuing to call St. Louis home. Have a great day, Dr. Casey. Been moved and seconded that we adopt our Curtis Resolutions Calendar. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose.
Aye.
Motion carries. With that, we'll return to our regular order of business. And before we do introduction of our guest, I'm gonna ask everyone to please join me in a moment of silence, um, for the loss of Comptroller Green's mother, um, uh, Ms. Maureen Williams, uh, who passed away. And thus, we're, Alderman from the first is, is representing the board this morning at her funeral services. So please join me in a moment of silence, uh, for, uh, Comptroller Green's mother, Dr. Maureen Williams. Thank you. Introduction of our guest, any introduction of our guests? Alderman from the twenty-third?
As always, I would like to have my good friend Greg Meyer as my honored guest.
Welcome, Greg. Alderman from the twenty-sixth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I have two honored guests this morning. First, I have an honored guest that many of us know and love, Ms. Linda Robinson. And why I'm shouting her out today is because I follow her. I follow her excellence and everything she does. I want to wish her luck and God's speed and wherever God is taking her. But I also want her to know that because I follow her, I knew that today was wear blue day for color rectal cancer awareness. So I wanted to shout out Linda Robinson. And I wore my blue today to use this and God see. And then the, the next one, again, talking about this emotional roller coaster that we've been on this morning, I would like to, um, have as my honored guest, um, my sister Leslie Byrd, a former twenty-sixth ward, um, resident that I still claim. And she knows that, but, um, she, she worked at Better Family Life for years. And now she's, um, under the amazing leadership of Mike McMillan and the Urban League and the Save Our Sons, uh, program daily out in the community. And unfortunately, one of the horrifying things about the city of St. Louis, um, on Wednesday, she, she works every day to save our sons, but on Wednesday, we couldn't save her son. And so I would ask that we, um, pause and have a moment of silence for Jaden Byrd and wrap our hands, our arms, our resources, our love and prayers around Leslie Byrd, her entire family, uh, her, her work family, the Urban League family, and anybody attached to, uh, the, the countless people that are attached and have re, um, have reaction, reacted to the loss of the amazing student, the amazing young man that Jaden Byrd was. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. I'll ask everyone to join us in a moment of silence. Alderman from the twenty-sixth, thank you so much for that recognition for the family. Um, and then I also want to thank you for recognizing Linda Robinson for all that she does. A, a lot of you've probably seen Linda at events and stuff. She's a volunteer that, uh, volunteers at nearly every event that you're at, you'll see her somewhere there volunteering, doing everything just to help. Just an amazing person. You follow her social media feeds, all positive, all pushing positive for people. She, uh, and just trying to spread, spread love. She's just an amazing person. So thank you so much for that. Um, Alderman from the fourteenth?
I, never mind, because I forgot to hand down. I was wanting to be added to another, yeah, okay. Okay, thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-first?
Thank you, Mr. President. As my honored guest, I would like to have Mr. Said Amir. He is the Vice President of Government Relations at the Metropolitan Sewer District, Mr. Brian Rogers, the Vice President of the International Association of Plumbing and Mechanical Officials, and my good friend, our former clerk, Mr. David Swin, as my special guest. Uh, and also to my colleague from the twenty-sixth, thank you for recognizing your former resident, uh, Ms. Leslie Byrd. She does stay in the O'Fallon Park neighborhood now. So we share her, but I'll tell you, she lets me know that she is West Side forever. So thank you for recognizing her. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board.
All right. Thank you. Alderman from the twenty-seventh?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I want to recognize our, uh, honored guests as the women of our secretaries, uh, for the Board of Aldermen for, uh, Women's Month. So I want to congratulate them for hanging in there with us and being strong.
Also, all the women on the Board of Aldermen.
Second.
I was the smart one, Alderman from the third. The rest, I'm Alderman Paige, you know, everybody else slept through that. Alderman from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President. That was, uh, was going to join in there. Um, the Alder Woman from the first continually reminds us that we, uh, are the Board of Alder Women. Um, and we have a majority here on the board. So, um, happy, happy Women's History Month, uh, to all of, all of the women who are involved in making the Board of Aldermen what we are, our staff, um, all of us as members, um, everyone who supports us. Thank you.
Alderman from the fourth? And then, then I think, then, then Alderman from, uh, hold on a second, Alderman from the fourth, Alderman from fourteenth, did you put your hand back up? All right, all right, back to you. Uh, you're muted.
Can't hear.
Uh, you're muted.
My, my honored guest today is Kathy Birch, and I would like to again recognize all the Alder Women, uh, for national, international Women's Month. Um, they do so much. And as the Alderman, Alder Woman from the twenty-seventh said, you know, we usually work behind the scenes. We're not the ones out there busting our buttons. Uh, and having, having been married for forty-five years, um, you know, I, I know how to work behind the scenes as well as work in front. But, uh, you know, it's, it's wonderful to be acknowledged. And I think that every woman on the Board of Aldermen delivers a special gift to this body. And I want to thank them and, uh, as we continue to work together. Thank you so much.
All right. Alderman from the fourth?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair and all of the, uh, Alder people, Alder.
You did it.
Board. I, um, want to acknowledge, uh, Laura Hughes. She's a developer in my ward that's doing fantastic things for the fourth ward, uh, Julia Allen, Carolyn Moore, and all of the fantastic women of the fourth ward. I would like to honor you as my guests.
All right. Alderman from the nineteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I want to honor all women for all the generations that they have moved us forward for equality and most especially just simple recognition. For many of you who are very young and may not have read some of the history that I have read and or experienced it, you know, we know about those big achievements, the voting rights and some other things. But what you didn't know about is some of the smaller achievements that made you feel, uh, more worthy in what you were trying to achieve. You see, in my first job in corporate America, we weren't allowed to wear pants to work. We couldn't wear pantsuits. You had to have a dress or a skirt on. And my immediate supervisor kept a tape measure in her drawer to measure the length of your skirt.
Weird, okay?
And I'm talking about a big major corporation, okay? So just all those challenges that we have had to overcome over the years, the patting on your butt unnecessarily so, the privilege that a man thinks that he has to kiss you on your cheek or lips just because you don't count. So we have come a long way and there's still a lot to be achieved. But I think all those women who showed But I think all those women whose shoulders we stand on and have the doors open that are open currently for us. And I asked that all of us take the opportunity to take the younger ones and guide them. Because everything is not about a twerk or a tweet. There's so much more important things to be done on this earth. And I just pray that we can get there and we get there united and be very successful. So I thank everybody for being my guests today for all the generations. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you for taking us back in history to tell, to be able to show what it was like. And so thank you, thank you. Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the 10th, like to wrap us up?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We're gathered here on March 4th, 2022, and this is National Tartar Sauce Day. As we are all are eating fish on Friday, so enjoy your tartar sauce today. And also it is Employee Appreciation Day, so how about some appreciation for all our staff today? Thank you very much, all you guys.
Yeah.
In 1902, AAA was founded. So any of you folks out there on the road who need assistance of any sort, thank AAA. All you folks here having road problems, remember that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes dated Friday, February the 25th, 2022.
Alderman from 10th, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for the approval of minutes from
November 25th.
November 25th. I'm having the some timers date this morning.
As
February 25th, 2022.
Been looking at Alderman from 10th, saying about Alderman from the 22nd, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Reporter City officials.
Reporter City officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes.
Dispense with line item seven, would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? We will dispense with line items eight through, actually, eight through 12.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm so sorry. I tried to get my hand up soon enough. I would like to table my resolution, which is currently on the informal calendar.
It's already, you, there's nothing you need to do with it. It's on, it's, yeah, just leave it.
Perfect. Excellent. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, you're welcome. Second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of Health and Human Services with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 84, Committee Subsponsored by Alderwoman Ingrassia and Alderman Gunther, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement, authorizing the city by and through its Department of Health to accept COVID-19 and the Adult Vaccination Supplemental Program Services Contract Grant Award of up to $197,913 from the Missouri Department of Health and Human Services over a period of three years from February the 1st, 2021 through February, I'm sorry, through January the 31st, 2024, and entering into and fulfill the program services contract under said grant and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill 207 sponsored by Alderwoman Martin and the following other persons, Ingrassia, Gunther, Martin, Rice, Middlebrook, and Todd. An ordinance to require food establishment as defined in Chapter 11.42.040 of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis to make water and low-fat milk the default beverage options offered with food establishment children's meal. The following board bills were reported out of HUD with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 206 sponsored by Alderman Oldenburg, an ordinance, amended ordinance number 71345, commonly referred to as the City of St. Louis Annual Operating Plan for Fifth Year 2021-2022, by the, by the addition of a new line item, Police Department Real-Time Crime Center, and amended ordinance number 71393 to appropriate 2.5 million of the $5 million of the 2021 coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds appropriated to the department, to the police department for the police department overtime, the real-time crime center. Board Bill 208 sponsored by Alderman Bosley and Alderman Muhammad, an ordinance pertaining to the creation of funds to assist in the city's efforts to support African Americans who have been victims of effects of slavery, authorizing the comptroller to establish the Reparation Fund and establish the Midwest Land Development Fund. The following board bills were reported out of Streets Committee with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 185 sponsored by Alderman Todd, Alderwoman Evans, Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderman Boyd, and Alderwoman Davis. An ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Samuel W. Hilton, Jr. Way pursuant to ordinance 68937, which shall begin at the intersection of Fountain Avenue and Albert Avenue and Albert Avenue and run east on Fountain Avenue to the intersection of Fountain Avenue and Bayer Avenue. Board Bill 192 sponsored by Alderwoman Howard pursuant to ordinance number 70333 as amended by ordinance number 71395, and ordinance directing the director of streets to install a speed hub to calm the floor traffic on the 4,900 block through the 50, through the 5,000 block, 100 block of Lansdowne Avenue between the intersection of Lansdowne Avenue, Kings Highway Boulevard, Lansdowne Avenue, and Brandon Avenue. Board Bill 194 sponsored by Alderwoman Howard and Alderwoman Tyus, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement, authorizing the director of the Department of Public Safety or his designated on behalf of the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute a U.S. Department of Justice 2021 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant to accept funds awarded, appropriate and said funds, and authorizing the Department of Public Safety to expand the appropriate funds for allowed purposes and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill 211 sponsored by Alderman Bosley, an ordinance establishing the Third Ward Residential Parking District and location and restrictions for current parking within the Third Ward Residential Parking District and authorizing the placement of permit parking only signs and prohibiting the parking of any vehicle in the district that does not display the required permit and providing, and providing a penalty for violations and contain an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of Parks Committee with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 191 sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd and Alderman Todd, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement appropriating to the Department of Parks Recreation and Forestry a portion of funds originally appropriated in ordinance number 71246 to the St. Louis Development Court for maintenance of land reutilization authority properties and contain an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of Public Safety with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 85 sponsored by Alderwoman Howard, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 71346, which established the 14th Ward Liquor Control District. That's the extent of second reading report of standing committees.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 11th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules to place Board Bill 207 on the perfection calendar.
Then moved by Alderman from 11th that we spent weeks for purposes of moving Board Bill 207 from the second reading to the regular perfection calendar. Second by, I think it was Alderman from the sixth. Second by Alderman from the sixth, I believe. Sorry, someone has a, a, their thing on. Thank you. Thank you. Alderman from the third, you have a, a question about the suspension of the rules for the purposes of moving it?
No, no, sir, I don't. That was before after, after, after we've finished with this business.
All right, Alderman from 14th, you have a question about specifically about this.
No, I wanted to move, I wanted, no, I wanted to move a, a bill to the perfection consent also.
This is going to the regular perfection calendar. Are you going to suspend the rules for Bill?
Yes, yes.
Which one?
Do we need to finish with Alderman Martins, Alderwoman Martins?
If there are other bills that, that people want to add, we can.
All right, let me, let me give you mine here. Board Bill 192 and Board Bill 85.
And I'd like to move Board Bill 208.
Alderman from the 19th.
I'm trying to find, man, I see 177, but I know I have two more.
All right, we'll be back next week, everybody.
But are you, we'll still have time?
Yeah. Yeah, you, you, yes.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll just go with just the one today.
Okay. All right, Alderman from the 11th, would you like to amend your motion to add board bills 192, 85, and 208?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to move, I'm sorry, it's mine's 207.
192.
192.
85.
85.
And 208.
And 208 to the perfection. Just clarification, I want to move mine to perfection, not perfection consent, because I have an amendment.
That's all right. You can move, you can, you can move, why don't you move mall to perfection consent? And then we'll just move it from perfection consent to the regular perfection calendar. So make the motion to move into perfection consent.
I'd like to make a motion to move the aforementioned bills to the perfection calendar, please.
Move by Alderman from 11th and attain, and attain a second on that motion. Second, Alderman from the 14th, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingrassia. Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Swizer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Pugh.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Muhammad.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Bacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clerk Herbert.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. 27, I vote.
I vote staying the motion of Alderman from 11th and move aforementioned bills to the perfection consent calendar. Alderman from 11th, would you like to request that Board Bill 207 be moved to the regular perfection calendar?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that Board Bill 207 is
Just a request.
A request that Board Bill 207 is moved to the perfection calendar.
All right, Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Place Board Bill 207 at the end of regular perfection calendars and Board Bill 192, 85, and 208 at the end of the perfection consent count.
So noted.
Dispense with line item 14, perfection consent.
Board Bill 144 sponsored by Alderman Carter, an ordinance approval, approving a redevelopment plan dated November 16th, 2021 for 744 through 750 South Fourth Street area. Board Bill 152 sponsored by Alderman Muhammad, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated December 14th, 2021 for the West Florestine Avenue, De Soto Avenue, East Warren Avenue area. Board Bill 188 sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on February the 9th, 2022 to change the zoning of property as, zoning of property as indicated on district map from the K unrestricted district to the H area commercial district and city block 2196, so as to include the described parts of the land and see block 2196 and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill 189 sponsored by Alderman Stevens, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on February the 9th, 2022 to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from the A single-family dwelling district to F neighborhood commercial district and city block 2696, so as to include the described parcel of land and city block 26, I'm sorry, 4696 and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill 190 sponsored by Alderman Gunther, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on February the 9th, 2022 to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from the J industrial district to F neighborhood commercial district and city block 1556, so as to include the described parcel of land and city block 1556 and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill 196 sponsored by Alderwoman Pugh, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on February the 9th, 2022 to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from the K unrestricted district to the H area commercial district and city block 3918.03, so as to include the described parts of the land and city block 3918.03 and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill 183, Committee Subsponsored by Alderman Bosley and Alderman Stevens, an ordinance relating to the appointment of and salaries of certain employees of the Department, I'm sorry, of St. Louis Board of Election Commissioners pursuant to or, pursuant to ordinance, I'm sorry, pursuant to 115045 and 115049 Revised Statutes of Missouri, allocating certain other employees to a graywood rate, including an emergency clause. The provisions of this section contained in this ordinance shall be effective with the start of the first pay period following approval by the mayor. Board Bill 180 sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface and subsurface rights for vehicle equation and pedestrian travel in the remaining 702.0, 702.06 feet of the 20-foot wide east-west alley in city block 3928, beginning 280 feet east of Vander Vander and containing and continuing eastward to its terminus, same being bounded by West Pine, Spring, Le Cleed, and Vander Vander in the city of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after describing accordance with Charter Authority and as informed with Section 14 of Article 21 of the Charter, and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill 187 sponsored by Alderman Con, an ordinance recommended by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estment and Apportement pertaining to the process through which the City of St. Louis Airport Authority lets concessions contract as St. Louis Navarre International Airport contain a severability clause and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill 199 sponsored by Alderman Carter, an ordinance, amended ordinance number 67402, which ordinance relates to original lease agreement dated March 18th, 2007, to be extended in the second mutual option between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and Consolidated Grain and Barge Company, a Missouri corporation, contain an emergency clause. Board Bill 204 sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook, an ordinance, amended ordinance number 67299, which ordinance relates to an original lease agreement dated February the 9th, 2007, to be extended in the second mutual option between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and Avericey Construction, Inc., a Missouri corporation, authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to lease agreement between the City of St., between the city and the leasing under certain terms and conditions for a period of five years with one more five-year mutual option of land and mooring rights for $115,021 for the first year and increasing each year thereafter as set forth in said First Amendment as attached here too, as Exhibit A and contain the severability clause. Board Bill 205 sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook, an ordinance, amended ordinance number 71387, which ordinance relates to an original lease agreement dated December 1st, 2021 between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and Grossman Century Company, formerly known as Grossman Iron and Steel Company, a Missouri corporation consenting to the assignment of said lease agreement to Advantage Metals Recycling LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, and contain the severability clause. Board Bill 193 sponsored by Alderwoman Clerk Herbert and the following other persons, Tyus Davis Howard Spencer P. Tyus Davis Howard Spencer P. Boyd Bosley Mohammed Odenberg Page and Switzer, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement authorizing fire chief on behalf of the city of Saint Louis to enter into and execute an assistance to firefighters grant with the U.S. Department of Homeland Security appropriating sale funds and a required city and a required city match for this, for sale funds, authorizing the fire chief to expand and appropriate funds by entering to contracts or, or otherwise for grant purposes and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one ninety-five sponsored by Alderman Bosley and the following Alderman persons: Orion Gunther Davis Howard Spencer P. Boyd Mohammed Odenberg Bakoro Clark Hubbard Page and Switzer. An ordinance authorizing the Director of Department of Public Safety or the Police Commissioner to enter into and execute an administer on behalf of the city agreements in substantially the form attached as exhibit A heretofore regarding reimbursement of CD for the cost of training for law enforcement positions with the CD or who leave their CD law enforcement positions for a short period of time and contain the severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill one ninety-eight sponsored by Alderman Moore Alderman Page and Alderman Switzer. An ordinance to make it unlawful for an individual to operate an all-trained vehicle as defined herein on public right-of-way or public property in the city. Board Bill two zero one sponsored by Alderman Bakoro Alderman Mohammed Alderman Page and Alderman Howard, an ordinance amended section one of ordinance five seven eight three one pertaining to vehicle exhaust systems to specifically prohibit, prohibit straight pipe exhaust systems. Board Bill two zero nine sponsored by Alderman Calder, I'm sorry, Alderman Bakoro, an ordinance accepting phase four provider relief funding and authorizing the fire commissioner on behalf of the city of Saint Louis to enter into a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and to contract to expand such funds and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill two ten sponsored by Alderman Bakoro, an ordinance authorizing the fire commissioner on behalf of the city of Saint Louis to enter into a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services to contract to expand such funds and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one ninety-two.
It's on page ten.
Thank you. Board Bill one ninety-two sponsored by Alderman Howard pursuant to ordinance number seven zero three 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 as amended by ordinance number seven one three nine five, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install a speed hub to calm the flow of traffic on the forty-nine-hundred block through five-thousand block of Lansdowne Avenue between the intersection of Lansdowne Avenue and Kings Highway Boulevard and Lansdowne Avenue and Brandon Avenue. Board Bill eighty-five.
On page twelve.
Thank you. Board Bill eighty-five sponsored by Alderman Howard, an ordinance repealing ordinance number seven one three four six, uh, which established the fourteenth ward lift control district. Board Bill two zero eight.
On page nine.
Sponsored by Alderman Bosley and Alderman Mohammed, an ordinance pertaining to the creation of funds to assist in the city's effort to support African Americans who have been victims of the effects of slavery, authorizing the controller to establish the reparation fund and establish the Midwest land development fund. That is the extent of perfection consent.
All right, Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we adopt the perfection consent calendar.
Move on from tenth, uh, uh, you guys have been real fast today. Second about all along from the fourteenth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill one eighty-one sponsored by Alderman Odenberg and the following Alderman persons: J. Boyd Davis Bakoro Calder P. Boyd Mohammed Odenberg Middlebrook Clark Hubbard Ballmer and Switzer. An ordinance submitting to the voters of the city of Saint Louis a proposal to change article four, section fourteen, I'm sorry, section twenty-four of the city's charter in order to increase the maximum fine that be assessed for violations of ordinances regarding the preservation and protection of environmental conditions in the city of Saint Louis for the prevention of harm to the health, safety and comfort of city residents or harm to private or public property such as unauthorized dumping of waste or debris on private or public property prohibited refuse waste, tired disposal and the like, and the like from five hundred to a thousand dollars and prohibiting for an election to be, I'm sorry, and providing for an election to be held for voting on the proposed charter change and the manner of voting here at, and the publication, certification, deposit and recording of this ordinance and contain an emergency clause.
Alderman from the sixteenth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill one eighty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I moved for the perfection of Board Bill one eighty-one.
Move by all along from the sixteenth. Second about all along from the nineteenth, Alderman from the sixteenth, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, Board Bill one eighty-one, as the clerk read, uh, does seek for a charter change, uh, take, uh, raising the maximum fine for illegal dumping and ordinance, other ordinances pertaining to environmental protection uh, and the unauthorized dumping of debris, waste and other prohibited material, uh, from five hundred to a thousand dollars. We'll be asking the voters to approve of this in August election. Um, very quickly, the reasoning for this board bill, uh, I think we all know the huge and or prolific problem that exists throughout our city around illegal dumping, uh, of not only just trash, but a lot, in a lot of cases, hazardous material, tires, antifreeze, oil, uh, literally folks using our city as, as a, eh, environmental waste dumpster. Uh, unacceptable, uh, there's been wide reports over the media on this, but just looking at our own data, there's been approximately eighteen hundred calls for service, it's five calls per day in twenty twenty-one. Um, the Environmental Investigation Unit is keeping up with this bad behavior, but they need a few more tools. There was a, um, there was a public safety meeting on nineteen, the nineteenth of January whereby using, uh, the Environmental Investigation Report, uh, from twenty twenty-one, uh, that's in your Google Drives as context, um, there were a couple of asks at the end of that report, which basically said, hey, we would love, uh, as a deterrent to, uh, increase fines around illegal dumping, and we'd love more advanced cameras. Public Safety Committee, um, uh, took that, took those charges to, to try to marshal through um, achieving of those goals. And, uh, if you recall, last week, we perfected Board Bill one eighty-one, which was a capital improvements, there was a line item in there to buy a hundred new cameras for the trash task force, or excuse me, the Environmental Investigation Unit. Um, so that's one promise we're hoping to deliver to, to the police department and the EIU, and the second, uh, based on their ask would be they would welcome and increase fines. Uh, last year alone, uh, EIU issued five hundred and seventy-three summons with a total of six hundred and fifty charges, uh, which included close to around the max charge of five hundred dollars as all, uh, and also issued over four thousand hours of community service. Uh, this is, uh, you know, in speaking with the city council's office, uh, Mr. Rich Sakora, he said that, uh, they do receive a fair amount of repeat offenders, and they hate, they hate the community service. It seems they'd rather just pay the fine. Um, so I think the thought be is, let's increase the fine so that we're not only continuing to issue community service, but let's let them also hate to pay the fine. Um, that annual report is worth a read, I would encourage everyone to take a look at it. Uh, but again, the takeaways were, let's increase the fines associated with illegal dumping, uh, and let's get some more advanced cameras. There are around two hundred and twenty-ish cameras right now that the Environmental Investigation Unit has, uh, throughout the city. I think eighty percent, close to that seventy-eight or seventy-nine percent of those are in police district, hang on, police districts six and five. So if you're not familiar with those districts, it's sort of north and northwest part of, um, uh, the city. So putting cameras, of course, where, where the, uh, the dumping and the offenders are, are, um, uh, you know, utilizing the alleyways the most for that, uh, you know, illegal behavior. So in concert with the cameras, which are, which are, you know, really helping the city council's office, I think the cameras are, are the reason that eighty percent of the charges are able to get, um, able to get filed. Uh, knowing that we can give them a hundred more state-of-the-art cameras, so they can put cameras at both ends of the alleys and also that are federated with the Real Time Crime Center. Currently, those two hundred and twenty-five cameras are not. Uh, it can not only catch these offenders in real time, but it can also monitor, again, in real time, uh, other illegal and nefarious activity that might be taking place in our city's alleyways. Uh, Mr. President, I will stop there for any questions.
All right, Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you had to hand up first.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, I, I am absolutely in support of this. I want to thank the Alderman from the sixteenth. Uh, the only, uh, even potential issue that I have with this is that I wish that we could make the fine, uh, higher still. Um, but, but I, I definitely appreciate all the work here. Um, I hope that this sends the, the message to people that the city of Saint Louis isn't your dump. Um, and, uh, please add my name as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Add Alderman from the twenty-fourth name as co-sponsor to Board Bill one eighty-one. All, all the women and Madam Clerk, by way, add my name to it, so it should have been there.
Yeah.
What happened, but, um, I believe the all along from twenty-six, the novel from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, members of the board. I'm already a proud co-sponsor of this legislation. Um, my colleague Alderman Odenberg noted the cause of service in his, um, presentation, but just since we've been on the meeting, I've received myself three more calls and three more sets of pictures. So like I said in the hearing, Alderman Odenberg, I'll have plenty of pictures when we start campaigning this, and let me just speak on that, on this part a little bit, because I've been out with some of the brothers that, um, have to do that community service, uh, when they get caught with this. A lot of times there's a miss in, in who's being fined and who's being punished for this, because they're just trying to work. A lot of them are just trying to look for work and have work cleaned out or doing what they're doing. The contractors then either don't pay them enough or don't pay them it pretty much at all. And so instead of them trying to not make any money off the job, then they're forced to do things like this. This is not negating it or condoning it, but I'm saying that a higher fine and making sure that we find and punish the right people in this is going to make a difference as well. And speaking of that, in the city of Saint Louis, our amazing refuse department, in the city of Saint Louis, when you are a city resident, you get twelve free dumps a year. And it's like, it doesn't have to be once a month, it can be twelve in one time. So you all that are using, again, like Alderman Orion, using our city as a dump, I am so glad that we're going to have this tool now in the toolbox to make real change in this, so that we all here as a board don't have to get, I know, I'm, I know we get these calls daily and these pitches daily and all that, and it's not fair, because we have residents that, and a lot of our elderly residents that are out picking up, cleaning up their alleys, picking up trash every day, for you all that come and think you can just dump. So thank you, Alderman Odenberg, for this legislation. And again, it, for you all that, that really want to be right about that, there is an option, you know, the, and, and after those twelve free dumps, you can pay, you can still dump, but, and, but you can do it right. So, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm already a proud sponsor of this legislation. Thank you, Alderman Odenberg, and I'll be ready for the camp, I'll be ready for campaign time for this.
All right, uh, Alderman from the fourth, you were next.
Yes, uh, uh, Mr. Chair, I'd also like to have my name added to this bill, because I know firsthand the problems of them dumping illegally. And the it should, the fines should be increased, so that's what I want to do, have my name added to Board Bill one eighty-one.
All right, thank you, Alderman, Alderman from the twenty-seventh.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. President, I'm already on there, but I guess I'm going all the way back, because I had created the tire bill, because we saw the, the tragedy that was going on in our communities. And when, uh, Randy Brightfield had gave us a report and told us that, uh, he had went through the twenty-seventh ward and got a tractor trailer filled up with tires. So we created a tire task force to create this bill, but as Alderman, uh, Hubbard said, you have people that are hiring guys that are less fortunate, can't comprehend well, to have them to clean out their rental properties, and then they dump the stuff on our lots. And so I'm in total support of this. I really wish we could do more, because we need to hit the, the guys that's owning these rental companies and, and these trucking companies that's doing these tire shops. So, uh, I'm in support of this.
Uh, we lost you all one.
They need to force that, uh, community service piece. I, I really do. That needs to be forced, because when you, when they tell me that they'd rather pay than do community service, that's showing they're not respecting our communities. And so I, I just have a problem with that. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All along from the eleventh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I echo my colleagues, um, this along with the speeding I talk about all the time is, uh, plaguing my ward, I think being, anytime you're on a an award that borders the county, I think that folks think they can just come in, dump, you know, all their materials or whatever. I also have the landlord problem as well, um, so I would like my name to be added as a co-sponsor as well. Thank you.
Uh, Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Um, Alderman from the seventeenth. Actually, the Alderman, hold on a second, Alderman seventeenth, um, I don't know how you two got shifted around, but Alderman from the twelfth, I think was first, and then, then you were next, but, uh, Alderman from twelfth, would you like to hold and allow the Alderman from the census, thank you. Alderman from the seventeenth, please proceed.
Hi, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, will the Alderman from the sixteen yield a question?
Alderman from the sixteenth, we yield a question, and to Alderman from the seventeenth.
Well.
All right.
Thank you, Alderman, uh, then from the sixteenth, I appreciate this bill. I would like to be a co-sponsor of this bill. Uh, my question for you is, how did you arrive at, uh, the increase and how much the increase that particular?
Yeah, yeah, good question. Um, it's what, uh, there's a prohibition to go above a thousand dollars from state law. So our charter, our charter has a maximum fine for all ordinance violations, uh, not to exceed five hundred dollars. Um, and, yeah, there's, I, I, I would be remiss without saying, there have been about seven or eight attempts in the past since nineteen ninety-five, at least recent history, to increase all of the municipal ordinance violation fines from five hundred to a thousand, and they've all not passed, um, through the charter, through a charter amendment, uh, or charter change. And I think, I think that the reasoning behind that is because that included all local municipal, uh, you know, violations, uh, particularly building codes, and I think voters thought, hey, if my grass is too long for a couple of weeks, or I got a shingle missing off my roof, I'm going to get a thousand dollar fine. Um, so the innovation here, the difference with this, with this board bill would be we're asking voters just to concentrate on the violation around environmental protection and the illegal dumping of waste, hazardous material, debris, trash, et cetera.
Alderman from the seventeenth. It looks like our screen is frozen. Alderman from the twelfth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, um, I would just like to say, I don't think a thousand's enough. I understand the limitation there, um, but I understand that we're working within, uh, state law. Uh, Mr. President, I would like to, uh, move that we make this board bill, uh, in bank.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twelfth and, uh, seconded, I think, by Alderman from the fourth, that we make.
Twenty-fourth.
Uh, twenty-fourth, all right, perfect, thank you, uh, that we make Board Bill one eighty-one in bank. Is there any discussion about that? It's been moved and seconded that we embank Board Bill one eighty-one. It's been moved and seconded that we embank board bill one eighty-one. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. Motion carries. If, at the, by the end of the meeting or whatever, if you if your video hung up or whatever and you did not want to be, uh, have your name added to this board bill, please just notify clerk and they'll make the address. Alderman from the fourteenth.
Um, will the Alderman, uh, Mr. President, will the Alderman from the sixteenth yield for a question?
Alderman from the sixth, we yield questions to Alderman from the fourteenth.
Yes.
Alderman from the fourteenth, please proceed.
Alderman Oldenburg, this bill looks like it's very well researched and, and you've, you know, dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's. I have a question regarding, um, maybe you came upon this in your research. How does the illegal dumping affect the recycling, um, in the city? Cause that seems to be a big problem with some residents that, you know, the recycling is not happening. Have you, did you find anything out about that in your research?
Yeah, you know, I think, I think it's bad actors are gonna just, you know, um, uh, dump trash and, and I, 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 I would, I would hope that, um, if, if once recycling gets restored or we know that the, the alley, uh, recycling bins uh, are going to the recycling center again, uh, the hope would be that will maybe curb a little bit more of illegal dumping, maybe the, that, that's logical. Uh, but I didn't see any direct, you know, kind of link between illegal dumping and a, and a lack of opportunity to recycle, just to answer.
Oh, no, I, I meant, does it, in, in other words, I guess my question should have been phrased differently. Um, does it affect the quality of the recycling product?
Ah, yeah, yeah. I, yeah, I, I know, I know for a fact the answer to that is yes. If, 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 uh, hazardous material or, you know, uh, waste or debris, uh, you know, that's defined different from solid waste, um, you, what you would typically think is trash gets in the recycling bins, yes, ma'am, that, that is, that does impact because that all has to be cleaned, um, and sorted. So, yeah, it's, it's an environmental concern from that perspective, too. Good point. I'm sorry. I missed.
Well, that's okay. I probably should have phrased it better, but thank you so much. And I'm, I'm also very much in favor of this bill. Thank you for taking it forward.
Thank you.
Alderman from the second, you had your hand up, but then it's down now. I don't know if you still.
No, I have nothing. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Um, this is going, eighteen, a bunch of people probably just wanted to add their name because their hands are down. That's my assumption. Something else happened. Put your hand back up. Alderman from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, with the ultimate from the sixteenth, yield first some questions.
Alderman from the sixteenth, we yield a question to Alderman.
Yes, I will. Yes, I will.
Please proceed.
Thank you so much. Um, thank you, Alderman, um, for this. I think, uh, it's, it's clearly a very big issue around the city. Um, I'm just curious to clarify a couple of things. Um, what, what department does the fine go to? So the, the thousand dollars, where does that money end up back into? What pot?
Yeah, it actually shows up in the, in the, um, courts, uh, line items in the budget is what it would be.
Okay. And so we're, then would we be allocating that? So how does that money get back to environmental investigations or to the refuse department? How, how do we make that happen?
Yeah, I, I think it, it becomes part of it. It's a revenue, uh, um, line item for the, for the courts, which they use, uh, in return to give out rewards. So over eight thousand dollars were given out, uh, last year and the year before for people to report illegal dumping. So a lot of that is used in, in concert with, with, um, rewards. And then additionally, I think if any, any, uh, outside resources are needed for the investigation, uh, the city council's office, they would use that revenue.
Okay, so this, this fine increase isn't necessarily going back into the, to the more cameras. That's, that was the separate bill that you were talking about. So that, okay, so this sort of cycles back through, um, and that, go ahead.
I was just gonna say that, to remind maybe you and everybody else that the, the trash task force or the EIU is funded through what was the three dollar trash, uh, increase that we did back in two thousand seventeen. Now we pay fourteen dollars, which was a three dollar increase. And that breaks down to, um, I think a portion of that was three hundred and fifty thousand of that, uh, goes to pay for staffing over time and, uh, police assignment bodies. And then a hundred and fifty thousand was, uh, for cameras, uh, specifically. So they can purchase about ten or twelve cameras with that a hundred and fifty thousand a year. But we gave it a shot in the arm with board bill one eighty-one, uh, to buy a hundred over the next year and a half that are, you know, more technologically advanced.
Okay. All right. So, um, that, that is helpful, um, clarification. And I was curious also, um, in the, in the comments from the ultimate from the twenty-sixth, um, and others about making sure that we're really finding the correct party here, the responsible party, that it's not just the, the workers who are out there, but the, the contractors or the, the owner of the property that brought in people to clean out an apartment that, um, and so I'm hoping, you know, specifically if this money is going back into the, to the municipal court fund, that it can help bolster their investigation efforts and, and perhaps, um, I guess encourage them to, to make sure that they're digging the furthest so that we're not just finding the people that are, are the ones that were hired to move this stuff, but the, the people responsible for that. Um, and also I just, yeah, and it, my, my question about the funding also was I, I think the more we can publicize that the refuse department can publicize, um, those, uh, the twelve yearly allowances to the dump, um, like the ultimate from the twenty-sixth said, the more we can talk about that and be very clear that how easy it is to just, you know, you don't, you can be a tenant, you don't have to own property, you just have to be a resident of the city. So anything that you have that shows your address in the city of St. Louis, you drive up to the dump, you can, you can take twelve loads. Um, it's, it's clear, it's just sometimes hard to find on the, on the city website. So, um, maybe just an encouragement, um, for us all to, and, and maybe through the, um, through this campaign to raise this fine, we can use it as a, a public engagement outreach to just really clarify what resources are available, um, for, you know, it's, it's spring cleaning time, right? Take your, take your load to the dump and don't put it in the alley. So, all right. Thank you so much, Alderman. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the sixteen, we recognize the close on board bill one eighty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. In closing, I, I think I will address, um, uh, what were some of the, the comments or questions around? Let's make sure we're holding the ultimate party responsible, the employers, um, as opposed to the employees. Uh, I did ask that direct question to the city council's office and they, and you guys might have to help me here with, uh, some of the lawyers on the board here, but the, the doctrine of respondent superior apparently allow, has allowed them to go directly to employers and or landlords, um, and hold them responsible. Uh, so, uh, Rich Secord and his team do a very good job of trying to parse through that. Uh, I think initially they find everybody, of course, but then they, they work to where, um, the, the ultimate employer or landlord is, is held responsible. Uh, cause that was a concern, uh, I think of, of, of myself and some of the members of the committee as well. Uh, so that is being done and we should make sure that, you know, in, in the annual report that comes to the public safety that we get that breakdown. Let's see the difference in that composition. Uh, I think that's important information for us. You know, I, I will close here, um, and renew my motion with saying that I agree that it's not, uh, probably high enough, uh, that we are, uh, prohibited by state law to go above a thousand dollars. I did look at some analog cities, uh, to St. Louis. Cincinnati charges anywhere from twelve hundred and fifty dollars to twenty-five thousand, depending on the dump. The city of Milwaukee successfully has a five thousand dollar maximum, uh, fine for illegal dumping. And, uh, just down Interstate seventy here, our friends in Kansas City have already, uh, uh, increased, um, to a thousand dollars, which is right at the, the state limit. So we need to ask the voters, uh, to come in line with, uh, some of our other cities around this problem. And, you know, um, I think it's, it's also incumbent upon us as we're having neighborhood meetings and whatnot to push to a vote yes, which I think will be prop F, um, uh, on the ballot in August. I know we have to get through an April election, but then let's, let's make sure that, that we're plugging this, we're ending where we can, and that it's isolated solely to illegal dumping, I think is an important matter to take away here today. Mr. President, I renew my motion.
All right. Thanks. It's been moved by Alderman from the sixteenth, seconded by Alderman from nineteenth, that we perfect board bill one eighty-one. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. Motion carries.
Board bill two zero seven sponsored by Alderman Martin, Alderman and Gracia, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Rice, Alderman Middlebrook and Alderman Todd. An ordinance to require food establishment as defined in chapter one, one, point four, two, point zero, four, zero of the revised code of the city of St. Louis to make water and low fat milk the default beverage options or offered with food establishment children's meal.
Alderman from the eleventh, we recognize on the perfection of board bill two oh seven.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would, uh, like to, uh, first offer, um, two amendments, um, starting with do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, you gotta move.
I'd like to motion to perfect. You think I'd have this down by now? I'd like to make a mo- motion to perfect board bill two oh seven.
Again.
The move by Alderman from the eleventh, seconded by Alderman from the ninth. Now you have some amendments.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I would like, um, to, uh, put forth amendment number one to board bill two oh seven.
All right. Is it, um, do you have it written out and it is it in this, in the drive?
It should be in, it should be in the drive. Thank you. Um, and, uh, it's basically, um, I worked with the, uh, Missouri Restaurant Association and the Beverage Association um, to add, um, one hundred percent fruit juice containing no more than six ounces per container or serving.
Right. But, uh, would you like to make the motion to?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt amendment number one to board bill number two oh seven.
It's been moved by Alderman from the eleventh and, uh, entertaining.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman from the thirteenth and Alderman, Alderman from the ninth. That we adopt amendment number one to board bill two oh seven. Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded all.
Previous role.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. Motion carries. Ma'am Clark, make note of that. Amendment number one's been adopted. Alderman from the eleventh, we're back to you.
I, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt amendment number two to board bill, uh, two oh seven, also in the drive, and it is just a technical error.
All right. Hold on a second. Uh, Alderman from the eleventh, please state the contents of amendment number two.
This is, uh, to amend, uh, board bill two oh seven, page three, line ten, as follows. Beginning on page three, line ten afterwards, set forth then, strike out the words and figures, um, and add division B and insert in lieu thereof, section two.
All right. It's been moved by Alderman from the eleventh, entertaining a second on that motion.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman from the fourteenth. Any discussion about for, on amendment number two to board bill two oh seven? Alderman from the hand popped up and went down. It's been moved the second that we adopt amendment number two for board bill two oh seven. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. Motion carries. Ma'am Clark, please make note of that. We've adopted amendment number two to board bill two oh seven. Uh, Alderman from the eleventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I'm excited to, uh, bring this bill forth. I, um, you know, I think everyone comes to this board, um, with, uh, their life experience and a lot of us, um, bring that experience as mothers, uh, grandmothers, fathers, grandfathers, um, or have children they care about. Um, this bill is supported by the, uh, St. Louis Children's Hospital, American Heart Association, Cancer Action Network and American Diabetes Association, among others. Um, just to kind of read a, or just to read a staggering, uh, statistic. Nearly two thirds of youth living in the U.S. consume a sugary drink daily. That equates to over thirty gallons of sugary drinks every year. Without change, forty percent of children will develop type two diabetes, which makes you two times more likely to develop and die from cardiovascular disease. Uh, I think, um, we've all seen the effects of COVID on, uh, children and adults with diabetes. So I think that this is a good time to propose this legislation. Um, I know I am, uh, not a perfect mom and my kid, uh, drinks sugary drinks a lot, um, but I do think it's important for parents to, um, stop and pause, uh, when we're on the go, when we're in a hurry, um, and think about what um, our children are consuming. Uh, this is by no way a mandate. You can still order your, uh, children whatever you want. Um, and the restaurant is not required to, uh, upcharge. Um, we have also worked with the Department of Health on this bill as well to make sure it's something that, uh, they can, uh, easily adopt. Um, and I think this is just an opportunity for us to, uh, just weigh in and improve the public health of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Uh, Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of board. With the Alderman from the eleventh, yield for question?
Alderman from the eleventh, we yield a question to Alderman from the twenty-second.
Yes.
Alderman from the twenty-second, please proceed.
Sure. Alderman, um, how will we police this? Who would write the tickets if they're in violation?
So the restaurant would have, um, six months to change their menu. And this is only just how those kids, we're all pretty familiar with how these kids' meals, um, are presented on the menus. And so, um, it's just an additional box that the health inspector checks along with many other things that they check. So if they haven't changed that, um, then, uh, that would be a war, a warning.
Okay, um, so they, so when they, when the health department goes in and do an inspection and if they don't see the product there, then they may give them a warning and next time they may, um, give them a fine?
Well, only if it still says, you know, ha, uh, cheeseburger with fries and your choice of soda or your cho- choice of, you know, chocolate milk. Um, but they don't have to op, this is, this is, they don't have to offer, um, a drink. It's just, um, uh, prohibiting the grouping together of these items as a package.
Okay, um, cause what bubbled up for me is, um, people constantly call me about expirate, uh, expired food, canned goods, whatever in stores and, you know, I, I'm not sure if it's the health department that, you know, investigates that of the licensed collector's office or how do we manage that? I know it's not totally germane, but I don't know if you might have had some.
Yeah, I know. Um, that's a good question because actually I have had that, uh, I've had that brought to me before and, um, I did call the, um, health department on that and, um, they, they followed up, but, uh, but yes, uh, this would just, you know, be another check on the inspection list and, um, if, uh, if it's offered, then, you know, obviously, um, we, we want to give folks warnings, so they would have the opportunity to say, hey, you can no longer offer this. Um, but again, this is not prohibiting, um, a parent from making a choice from any beverage offered by that restaurant. This is just a way of, um, you know, uh, raising awareness and, you know, as a parent, when you pull up, if, if you want to, you can say, hey, your choices are milk water or this apple juice product. And I did, uh, it was verified to me by the Beverage Association that, uh, the, uh, the juice is now offered in these sizes. So this is, um, still something that, um, you know, distributors are offering and it, it's not, it shouldn't be cumbersome.
Okay. I noticed your inspection date is six months uh, versus, you know, normally thirty days after the mayor signs a bill. Is there a marketing campaign that's gonna happen between that period of time? Cause I can certainly appreciate that extended period of time to give folks a chance to know about it, but how will they be notified about this change?
Um, that is a good question, um, that I wish I had, uh, thought of. Um, but, uh, I don't know if, um, I don't know how that information is distributed. Um, but, uh, I don't know. We have, uh, a colleague that might know how those changes are, um, are, are shared with, uh, with restaurants, but I am not sure.
Okay, no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman from the twenty-third. Yeah, just, uh, one, I'd want to roll call because I, I don't support this. Um, my issue again is what, what else are we gonna tell businesses they cannot do? You know, we, we drive businesses out of the city. You know, we, we've, we've done things, you know. Uh, I, I would just want to roll call. I can't support telling a restaurant or business, uh, you know, like, uh, you know, even in the case of Alderman Boyd, who has a, a, like a party, kind of a, a wedding party, kind of a thing. You know, what's to stop them? You know, what, what's on his, does he have to change his whole uh, event menu that says, gee, I can't serve kids under, I, I just, I'm not gonna.
No, no, he wouldn't. And you're still able to.
I'm just making a statement. I'm just making a statement.
I'm just making a statement, I'm just making a statement. I'm just making a statement. I would just ask for a roll call. I just don't.
All one from eleven, you haven't been recognized, so, alright.
So, I was just making a statement.
Yeah, and Alderman from twenty third, your comment's come to me. If you want her to uh yield for questions.
I don't.
Okay, alright.
I just wanted to make a statement. I would like a roll call on this, cause I can't support, you know, I can't support this.
Alright, thank you. Uh, any further discussion, any further discussion? All the one from the eleventh, you're recognized to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. And um it was confirmed that the uh health department um would distribute information through the um public information team and that the American Heart Association will also help make sure that those materials are distributed to the right business owners. And again, um, parents can still, you know, order whatever they want. Um, and uh that would, uh, business owner can serve uh what they want. I mean, obviously not alcohol, but uh, but those other, other beverages. So um I, I appreciate um this opportunity and with that, oh, um, I'm not sure if the alderwoman from the twenty seventh has a question.
It is too late, cause I've.
Alright, um, may, I thank everyone for that uh opportunity and I request favorable consideration. Thank you.
Alright, it's been moved by all the, all the women from the eleventh and second about all of them from the ninth that we adopt board bill number, that we perfect board bill number two oh seven as amended. And there's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Hold on one second.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Iggracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder. Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Bomber.
Aye.
Alderwoman Morden.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boy.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Board to aye.
Thank you. Alderman Bacaro.
No.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley.
Uh.
Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Calder. Alderwoman Peel.
Aye.
Twenty five a votes and one no vote.
A vote staying motion, all the one from the left, and perfected board bill two oh seven as amended. Third reading consent.
Board bill one forty seven, one seventy two, one seventy three, one seventy four, one eighty six, one sixty seven, one seventy seven, and board bill one sixty five.
Alderman from tenth, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. President, members of board, a move we adopt the third reading consent calendar.
Second.
Move on from the tenth, second about all of them from the second, any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our third meeting consent calendar. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Uh.
Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Iggracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder. Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Bomber.
Aye.
Alderwoman Morden. Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Bacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Calder. Alderwoman.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Aye.
Twenty seven a votes.
By a, by a vote, staying motion, Alderman from the tenth and third read and finally pass the enforcement bills. Third reading report of engrossments.
Board bill one.
Alright, other one second. Alderman from the sixteenth. Would you like to place board bill one eighty four as amended on the third reading informal calendar?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make that request and just uh to ensure everyone, it's really just a technicality to ensure that the, the board of estimate apportionment approves um said bill and capital improvements first. Uh, and we'll uh take it up hopefully next week.
Alright, Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Place board bill one eighty four as amended on the third reading informal calendar.
So noted.
Third reading report of engrossments.
Board bill one forty seven, one seventy two, one seventy three, one seventy four, one eighty six, one sixty seven, one seventy seven, and one sixty five.
All other business being suspended, presence y'all, an open session, fix his signature here too today, and that these may become law. All the one from the sixth, you recognize. All the woman from the sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to suspend the rules to introduce resolution two oh seven from the floor today.
Alright, it's been moved by all the one from the sixth. Think it was second about all one from the twentieth. It's a quick one. We suspend the rules for purposes of introducing resolution two oh seven.
It's actually, I apologize, it's two oh five.
Two oh five, thank you. That was an important, this important change. Uh, it's been moved by all from six, second about all from twentieth, that we suspend the rules for purposes of introducing resolution two oh five. Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans. Alderman. Thank you. Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Iggracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Bomber.
Aye.
Alderwoman Morden.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye. Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Bacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Twenty seven a votes.
My vote, you stay in motion, all the one from the sixth, and suspend the rules for purposes of introducing resolution two oh five. Madam Clerk, please resolution two oh five at the end of our first reading of resolutions calendar. All the one from the fourteenth, you hand this up.
I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll get to it when we, when we get to, but Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
Don't note it.
Right. First reading of resolution.
Resolution one ninety seven, sponsored by Alderman Bacaro and Alderwoman Tyus. Amending board of Alderman rules to prohibit lobbyists from serving on the board of Alderman.
Uh, Alderman from the twenty third, you recognize on first reading of resolution.
Yeah, I've seen this, you know, i- at the state level and uh what I would like to do is refer that to, I would imagine legislation so that we can uh discuss this openly and, and have a good, robust conversation about whether we believe we should have this or not.
Alright, it's been moved by all from twenty third, entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Second about all from the twenty second.
Hello.
Uh.
Discussion.
Uh, it not about the resolution of what committee, if you have a discussion.
Correct.
Committee.
About the committee.
Yes, please.
Well, I see that, I see the Alderman from the seventh uh hand up, but I, I think that is, if this is a rule change, it should go to the rules committee.
My last part, and I think that uh the, the Alderman from twenty third seemed open of whatever, whatever committee.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Alright, uh Alderman from the seventh.
Yeah, I just wanted to add it. I mean, we just had this discussion on the Alderman from the thirteenth resolution a couple of weeks ago. I mean, it's a rules change being proposed. I think it should go to the rules committee and we'll, we'll discuss it there.
Alright, sounds good. Alderman from the twenty third, I think you were opening that, you.
Oh, sure. No, let's, let's send it to the uh rules and uh hopefully we have a hearing and have a robust discussion on this.
Alright, it's been moved by Alderman from twenty third, second about Alderman from this uh, Alderman from the twenty second. That we assign res- this resolution to rules. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note.
Don't note it. Resolution one ninety nine, sponsored by Alderman Bacaro, requesting the collector revenue to spend collection of recycling charges.
Alderman from the twenty third, you recognize on the first reading, resolution one ninety nine.
Uh, so this, again, multiple, multiple complaints because we're not recycling. And people, you know, one of the issues, things that we said, we charged a little bit extra because we said that would take care of the recycling. I'm surprised sort of that someone hasn't filed suit, but in, it feels to me that we're charging for something we said we were gonna do and we're not doing. And uh so, again, I think there should be some discussion on it, but I believe that we're collecting money for something that we're not doing. And either we should lower it or give a credit back or, or something. Or, I got an idea, how about we figure out a way to start doing the recycling? Again, I don't know if anybody else is getting multiple calls, but that is, I get that call all the time. People are upset that they're putting the trash and the uh recycling into the same, in, you know, and then going to the trash.
Right, we do, uh, Alderman from the twenty third, you wanting to send this to committee?
Yeah, I, I would like to send that, I believe that one should go to the streets committee, but, you know, again, I'm open to whatever, but I believe it's true.
Alright, it's been moved by all in front of twenty third that we sign resolution one ninety nine to streets. Uh, second about all from the twenty second, any further discussion? Been moved and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign resolution one ninety nine to streets.
Don't note it. Resolution two zero one, sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus. Public safety, legal issues regarding homeless encampments and pop-up shelters.
Alderman from the twenty second, recognize on the first reading of resolution two oh one.
Yes, uh, Mr. President, I don't see myself as a co-sponsor, but I'm, I should be a co-sponsor. Please place me as a co-sponsor.
Madam.
Um. I would like the clerk to read resolution two zero one, please.
Madam Clerk, can you please read resolution two zero one?
Resolution two zero one, public safety, legal issues regarding homeless encampments and pop-up shelters. Whereas the unhoused or homeless population issue in the city of St. Louis is an issue that deserves to be addressed from both the public safety and the health aspect with the solution that is fair and equitable solution for the entire still, for the entire city. Whereas it is the position of the sponsors of this resolution that no one deserves to be homeless or unhoused. Whereas it is the position of the sponsors that the homeless and unhoused should not have rights that are sus- superior to the house or property owners. And whereas often there are public safety issues associated with homeless encampments or pop-up shelters that often violate the zoning laws. of the city of St. Louis. And whereas according to the 2018, eighteen statistics from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, there are over half of a million Americans that are homeless. Those same statistics, statistics show that the homeless population has a high rate of mental illness, substance abuse, and previous incarceration. Whereas therefore, unless homeless programs and housing are set up and placed in properly zoned areas, there are often external problems that plague the communities where the homeless shelters and housing are placed that require extra security and policing. Whereas the last two administrations have, have also used pop-up homeless shelters in location around the city that do not seem to have zoning laws that allow city use and say pop-up shelters are often reported by surrounding residents as a source of criminal behavior which increases the crime in their neighborhood. And whereas using the Board of Adjustment and other methods such as closing Larry Rice facility, which had been located in, near the downtown St. Louis Public Library, Library for many decades, closing other facilities located in other parts of the city and moving them to neighborhoods north St. Louis has caused public issues as such as burning down, such as the burning down of valuable housing stock where homeless have sought refuge and attempt to heat the vacant housing by starting illegal fires. Whereas that is some question as to the legality of homeless encampments and pop-up shelters. And whereas there have been very little additional soc- social services, security, or policing assigned to these facilities, placing facilities in improper zone areas or without proper support as stress to St. Louis neighborhoods, especially those have been, those that have been for years denied city resources to maintain a healthy living environment. This solution is patently unfair. And whereas even though there are multiple documentable public safety problems at the certain homeless facilities and they have been clearly in violation of the zoning laws of the city of St. Louis, the Board of Adjustment has allowed these facilities, facilities to expand in violation of the law causing harm to surrounding residential communities. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the sponsors of this resolution are proposing the Public Safety Committee convenes investigate the legality and the public safety issues surrounding homeless encampment, pop-up homeless shelters and all other homeless establishment. Introduced this fourth day of March, 2022 by the Honorable Sharon Tyus, Alderman of the first ward, the Honorable Jeffrey Boyd, Alderman of the twenty-second ward.
Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to send for Resolution 201 to the Public Safety Committee.
Been moved by all from the twenty-second, second about all the one from fourteenth that we send Resolution 201, the public safety. Any discussion about that assignment? All the women from fourteenth, your hand is still up. All the one from the fourteenth. Your, your hand is still up.
Oh, I, I'm finished it, okay.
All the one from six.
Thank you, Mr. President. With the Alderman from the twenty-second, you have questions?
Is the questions related to the, just this committee assignment? We're not here to discuss the bill, but this is just for committee assignment.
Okay, I'll wait then, thank you.
All right, thanks. Any discussion about committee assignment? It's been moved by Alderman from twenty-second, seconded by the all for, of the fourteenth that we assign Resolution 201. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution 201, the public safety.
Don't note it. Resolution 206, I'm sorry, 202 sponsored by Alderman Davis. Authorizing extension of the completion date in connection with the plan for industrial development project for Steelco Grashit LLC.
All along from nineteenth, you recognize on first reading of Resolution 202.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution 202 is a a basic extension of a project completion date. These are simple, this is what we do when we see a development is doing well and this extension is because they added more to the project. So if, if it is required, it can go to committee, I would.
Request unanimous consent.
I would like to request unanimous consent, yes, sir.
Objection.
There's been an objection to unanimous consent by all the woman from the eighth.
Okay.
So you can choose to suspend the rules and still pass it out today if the timing is an issue.
Timing is definitely an issue. So I would like to request suspension of rules to pass it out today.
It's been moved by all the women from nineteen. Think. Second about all from the twenty-first that we spend the rules for purposes of moving Resolution 202 out today. And what's before us now is just a discussion about the suspension of rules. All the one from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would the Alderman from the nineteenth yield for a question?
All one from the nineteenth will yield for questioning to all the one from the eighth.
Yes.
Thank you, Alderman. I, I objected just because I, I want to be clear. We've seen a lot of these resolutions come forward and is it, is it our practice that they should go to committee for, for a public hearing on them first or I, I, there was a question raised by one of my constituents about whether we needed to have a public hearing, so that was the reason for my objection.
There's substantial completion on the Steelco project and as all of us know, just by all of the publicity it has gotten. It started off with just one apartment building being done, has expanded to a new city. And based on all the planning to get everything else in order, we just need to get an extension to finish this one part. And most of what is down there has never asked for any kind of incentives, only the very last one that we had talked about. So we're just extending the completion date by contract, which was supposed to be completed by December, 2021, and just ask for an extension, which was also agreed upon by the appropriate departments.
Okay, yeah, I was, so, so we don't need to have another public hearing on, on this resolution?
Absolutely not. This is not a new project, no.
Okay, I, I, that was the, the question that was raised, so I just wanted to be clear. Thank you so much for, for yielding for a question.
Sure.
It's been moved by all along from nineteenth, second about all the then from the twenty-first that we spend the rules for purposes of passing Resolution 202 out today.
Previous role.
There's been a request for previous role. Hold on a second. We can't do previous role because it was a voice vote. It's been, it's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Abstain.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Moran.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Present.
Alderman Switzer. Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Peel. Alderman Todd.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Bacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con. Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd. President Reed. Alderman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Con.
Present.
Twenty-three, aye votes, one abstained and two voted present.
By vote, staying motion of all the, all the women from the nineteenth and suspended rules for purposes of adopting Resolution 202 today. All one from the nineteenth, would you like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 202?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to adopt Resolution 202.
Move about all along from nineteen, second about all from twenty-second, any discussion?
Previous role.
It's been moved in the second, there's been a request for previous role. Hearing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Resolution 205 sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Carter, Alderman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Moran, Alderman Switzer, Alderman Green, Alderman Orion, Alderman Con, Alderman Odenberg, Alderman Todd, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Boyd, and Alderman Howard in support of the expiration of the city of St. Louis mask mandate.
All the women from the sixth, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution 205.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for unanimous consent.
Hearing no objection, all along, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. This is a resolution that the Health Department asked for the support of the Board of Aldermen on. I think most people realize that on last Friday, the CDC recommended some new guidance on COVID-19 and put in place community level systems. And all of the indicators here in the city of St. Louis have us falling within the low level. And so the Director of Health has not asked us to renew the mask mandate here in the city of St. Louis, but this language does include information about the fact that she is still encouraging individuals to wear masks in certain situations, making sure that people who are in common areas of City Hall and other city offices are still wearing masks to be careful and then indicates that the Board encourages the Department of Health to continue monitoring the metrics to ensure that we are able to put a mask mandate in place if the data and metrics indicate that we should. And I'm happy to take questions.
Right, Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President, dear members of the board. I merely wanted to ask that, that being a broken record today apparently, I wanted to move that we make this on bank as well.
It's been moved by all of them from the twelfth that we make Resolution 205 in bank, entertain a second on that.
Second.
Second about all the one from the fourth, any discussion on that motion? Then move in the second, Madam Clerk. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that. All the one from the nineteenth. Yeah, you're, you're muted, Alderman.
Okay, that's better. Mr. President, I wanted to just have a very brief discussion on this. Is that okay?
Yes.
Thank you. As I contemplated this and did my homework on this, first I'd like to thank Dr., and I can never get her name right, so she's Dr. Davis to me. But our the interview that she did, I watched it. I appreciate her honesty. I appreciate the fact that she opened up the process for people to start thinking for themselves as well. The CDC has reasons for what they do. And even with the interview with that director, there was a lot of common sense statements made which allowed people to, yes, you can hear what we say, but you, you should also think about you, your family, your business, and, and your community. So maybe we don't wear masks for a while, but if an individual or a business believes they should require it, they have the right to do that. And so I heard that in their statements and I feel comfortable in supporting this, but knowing that all that we shall do in the future will be to continue to give people the voice and the voice and the, the opportunity to think and do for themselves. Because this is not going away totally anytime soon. So we do still need to be cautious. And so I can support it based on that. And because I heard their statements were loud and clear, to still be cautious for this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? All the women from the sixth, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt Resolution 205.
Moved by all the six, second about all the one from the eighth. Any further discussion? It's been moved in the second, it all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. Motion carries. By your vote, you adopted Resolution 205.
That's the extent of first reading of resolutions.
Second reading.
We have none.
Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Tuesday, March eighth at nine AM, HUDs will have a meeting. Wednesday, March ninth, Streets will have a meet at ten AM. Personnel will have a meet at one PM. Health and Human Services will have a meet at two PM. I'll be a webinar. Thursday, March tenth, Public Employees will have a meet at ten AM. HUDs will have a meet at one PM via webinar. And Friday, March eleventh, full board meet ten AM via webinar. That's the extent of the announcements.
Thank you. At the Personnel Committee, one of the things that we're going to be discussing at Personnel is our date for coming, coming back in person. So if any of you have any thoughts or whatever and you cannot make that personnel meeting, just email the clerk and we'll make sure to take in account your ideas or thoughts or concerns or whatever when we do, when we have that meeting. All the one from the nineteenth?
I forgot to take my hand down.
Okay, all the one from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We're on announcements, right?
Yes.
Okay, I want to make sure. I had a call, but I have three announcements. First, Heat of St. Louis and the St. Louis City Health Department is having a Get What You Need Community Resource Fair this Saturday, eleven to two at forty-one forty-five Kennelly Avenue. It's the Child and Family Empowerment Center. And they are going to have a expunge, an expungement clinic. We all know that we have constituents that can really use that. Parking assistance, food, COVID vaccine boosters, utility assistance, rental assistance and free more. So if you have constituents, please share that, that you might think might be able to take advantage of that, please share that with them. And then in the twenty-sixth ward, well, formerly the twenty-sixth ward, now the tenth ward, Aphenia Healthcare, shout out to Aphenia Healthcare making women's history again by announcing Dr. Kendra Holmes as their new president. So Aphenia Healthcare and Reverend Dr. Antonio Settles at Union Memorial UNC, they are having a community resource fair as well with vaccines, voter registration and Medicaid application assistance. And that's from twelve to three at eleven forty-one belt, twelve to three at eleven forty-one belt. And then lastly, I just wanted to make an announcement. I know that many of people that are watching or follow our commi- our committee meetings as well yesterday. In our HUDs committee meeting, Alderman Boyd announced that we as other persons can submit projects or submit things that's going on in our ward. And so I wanted to announce that anyone that might be in the twenty-eighth ward that might want to make sure that their voice is heard, I have already started reaching out to my constituents so that I can make sure that I can advocate on behalf of the entire formerly twenty-sixth ward, tenth ward at the meeting on Tuesday. um, on behalf of the entire formerly twenty-sixth ward, tenth ward at the meeting on Tuesday. But if there are any constituents in the twenty-eighth ward, I want to make sure that you all, the boys can be heard as well, so you can reach out to me or my office and we will take, um, all of your comments down. Thank you so much, President.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I promise I'm not gonna ask for an on-bank this time. There's nothing to on-bank. Uh, but I did just want to make a brief announcement of congratulations to our very own Board of Aldermen Liaison, uh, from the Mayor's Office, Kevin Bailey, who celebrated a, oh, let's say thirty-second birthday yesterday. So to Kevin Bailey, at least on behalf of the twelfth ward, a warm, happy birthday. And, uh, with that, I yield back. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman, uh, Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I think we all remember a few years back, uh, the St. Patrick's Day, uh, festival and parade, uh, here in Dogtown was one of the, the first casualties of, uh, COVID. Uh, it was one of the first major events here in town, uh, to be canceled and kind of let us know that COVID was here. Uh, so I am, uh, very happy that this year, Thursday, March seventeenth, uh, St. Patrick's Day will be in full effect, uh, in Dogtown in the twenty-fourth ward. Uh, there's a kid's zone, uh, a party zone, uh, there'll be live music, uh, the parade. Uh, the parade starts at, uh, roughly Oakland and Tam and goes to, uh, Manchester and Tam, starts at eleven. Uh, if anyone hasn't been to, uh, St. Patrick's Day in Dogtown before, I would, uh, definitely recommend it. It's a, it's a great time. Uh, so we're all looking forward to it and, uh, everyone is welcome.
All right, thank you. Um, Alderman from the twenty-second.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members. But I'd like to send a big shout out to my wife's sister, Renee Cooper, who will be celebrating a significant birthday on March the sixth. I'm trying to be careful. I really wanna say what it is, 'cause it's a magical birthday, but, uh, because this is, uh, Women's History Month, I'm just gonna stay out of that one. But anyway, she is celebrating a very significant birthday. I love her dearly and, uh, we're looking forward to celebrating with her this weekend. Thank you.
Uh, we also have, um, uh, Ms., Ms. Young is celebrating, celebrating her hundredth birthday today. Uh, just got a, a note across my desk, uh, and, um, let's give her a big congratulations on her. Congratulations, Ms. Young. And what a perfect name. I think about it. Hundred years young. All right, uh, Alderman from the twenty, Alderman from tw- from the nineteenth, you still have your hands up, and Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you still have your hands up. You guys have anything or you done?
Oh, I do, sir.
All right, Alderman from the nineteenth.
Thank you very much. Uh, I wanted to wish my eldest son a happy birthday. His birthday is the Sunday. Uh, it is rare that I talk about my family on any level because I know how vicious politics is and I don't never want them to ever be touched by any of it. So, uh, but as I am, uh, aging with all kinds of, I don't care, and that's a nice way to put it, I'm gonna start talking about them at length. So to my dearest oldest son, your mom says happy birthday to you and may you please enjoy Sunday and I've sent you a surprise. Thank you, bye.
Thank you. Let's happy birthday to that. Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you still have your hands up? You just trying to stall us out or you, you have something for us? Alderman from the twenty-fourth, gone once, gone twice. I don't know.
Or likely. I think he's watching The Simpsons.
Motion to, motion to, Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse. Alderman from the tenth. You recognize on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we excuse the Alderwoman from the first ward for necessary absence.
Moved by Alderman from tenth, entertain a second on that motion.
Back.
Objection.
Back. From the twenty-seven, uh, I, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose.
No.
Oh, man, I'm recording that one. I'm turning. Uh, motion carries. Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn to March the eleventh, twenty-twenty-two.
Move by Alderman.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman from the fourth, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. We stand adjourned. You all have a great weekend.
Have a great weekend.